Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, July 19th, 2021 Selectmen's Meeting. Would please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whoops.
We have public comment. Joe Demore. You're up. Joe Demore, you're up. Please introduce yourself to everybody that know who you are.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Joe Demore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. I have a brief comment and some suggestions. I watched the Board of Selectmen meeting on July 6th. In between 1 hour and 15 minutes and 1 hour and 18 minutes, I saw something that I thought was inappropriate, the use of the gavel by the chair and some mannerisms that were expressed. And, but I'm not here to complain, I'm here to provide solutions. That's what I've done in 12 years of public service. So, I think it's a really, really good idea for the Board of Selectmen to really pay attention to a few things. One of them is Robert's Rules of Order. They're very clear. It's how we govern ourselves in public, especially when you have an authority and you're a quasi-judicial board. I'm not going to go through the details, but for example, in Robert's Rules, there's rules about no motions, long speech, calling things in order, out of order, question of privilege, point of order, what to do with rowdy members, too many motions in one, parliamentary inquiry, and point of information. Now, when I was on the Board of Selectmen way back in 2014, we used to call it Board of Selectmen, now it's called the Select Board, I had actually, at the expense of the town, had requested that we buy a book called The Town Meeting Times. That is ultimately the parliamentary procedure that we use here. There is a selectman's version of that. I donated back to the town my copy, I think there's a couple of copies going around. I really believe in my heart that it's in the best interest of the town for everybody. All boards, all commissions really understand Robert's Rules and parliamentary procedures that are embedded in the Town Meeting Time, especially pages 37 and 38. So I've made some copies for you of what I've just presented. I also have to say, besides the manner of speech and decorum and rules, I think dressing up is very important. And I don't mean just this particular commission or board here, but I find it very peculiar that on candidate's night, everybody gets dressed up. And then, some of these boards and commissions, it looks like we're on the set of Gilligan's Island. And I think that that sets the wrong precedent. I think decorum and I think manner of dress is professional, I think a willingness to conform and a willingness to work together. And as a government, we need to professionalize ourselves a little bit better in manner, in speech, in rules, and in dress. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. Ruth Revard, public comment?
Thank you. My name is Ruth Revard, I live at Sixberry Wood Lane, here in Groveland. I grew up in town and I have returned now to raise my own family. I've been a dedicated member of the Finance Board for five years, I was voted to chair this year. We have a dedicated board with members bringing a range of talent and experience that I believe our town is fortunate to be the beneficiary of. In case the public is not aware, I'd like to explain a little bit about our board. We meet with every town department to comprehensively review the town's annual budget and other financial concerns of the town. We follow up with questions and research. I did not recommend purchasing a police cruiser without interviewing the chief, and I only recommended a new Council on Aging van after meeting with the director, reading a report of statistics, and touring the old van. We have worked respectfully and thoughtfully to support the employees and the town. This has been a challenging year, with some turnover in key positions in our town hall, and accordingly, I've dedicated substantial hours to the town this year, all with the full support of my board, who happened to be here tonight in attendance, unbeknownst to me. In the spirit of moving the town's very important business forward, I've not engaged in some of the unproductive banter and disagreements that I've encountered, particularly this year, in my volunteer role. I did not comment when Select Chair Watson made factually inaccurate statements at the annual town meeting, nor did I comment when I've been repeatedly ignored, as well as misquoted and misrepresented by some members of this board. I believe that we can agree to disagree, and you may choose to employ or ignore the well-researched votes of the Finance Board that you have appointed. Yet, this must be done in a respectful manner. After your last meeting on July 6th, I'm compelled to speak up for myself. I want the record to clearly state that I did not make the comments that Select Chair Watson spoke of. I did not refer to employees, as the chair falsely quoted me, as "the little women who are working at the town hall," nor did I ever say that they're lucky to have a job. The April 5th meeting recording and minutes reflect no such comments. This accusation is entirely unfounded, irresponsible, and frankly, to me, it's plain confusing. Yet, the chair is using such falsehoods to attempt to block me from volunteer opportunities in this town. The chairman also stated that I'm not looking out for the benefit of the town of Groveland. Although the chair and I may sometimes have disagreements in opinions, I can assure everybody that I am using my education and my experience to make the very best recommendations in collaboration with the Finance Board that I can. I'm only volunteering my time and my efforts for the benefit of Groveland, and I'm proud of the diligent work that I've produced, along with my board, particularly this year in the absence of a finance director or a town administrator. All of my work contains the highest level of integrity and concern. I will continue to support my board and the town, yet I expect falsehoods and misrepresentations of my efforts and my reputation to stop immediately. I appreciate your time and I respectfully request that this statement be recorded on file with the July 6th Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And I still recommend everybody volunteer for boards and committees in town. Thank you.
Jason, could you lend me a warrant?
Sure.
If you might.
No, no.
Oh, I said yes.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2203 in the amount of $191,595.53.
For a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant 2203 in the amount of $1,467,337.11, which breaks down to the town, $115,651.18. Water and sewer, $42,609.62. Payroll withholding, $29,370.56. Light bills, $243,071.89. Pentucket assessment, $1,017,752.33. Grants, $30,247.52.
Do I draw a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous.
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant supplement 2203 in the amount of $11,365.99, which breaks down to special revolving grants, $8,600. Town bills, $2130.37. Water and sewer, $208.60. Light department, $427.02.
Do I draw a second?
I'll second that.
Can I just ask, is this the warrant from during the weekday? I mean, why is this a supplement? Because I don't see the breakdown on the minute, on the agenda, that you just read.
Breakdown was in the warrant itself.
Okay, yeah.
Really for the Medicare expenses, like...
So is this the warrant that we had to sign prior to this meeting? That's what I'm asking.
Ooh, I don't know.
I'd like to know what we're... I didn't have a chance to look at it because I was trying to get on the Internet here, so can somebody answer that?
Well, we'll cast him, he's back.
Usually if it's a supplement, it's different.
I think that's what it was. Kathy, could you answer the question on the, Kathy had on the bill warrant supplement? That was a paperwork that we signed.
Is that...
That was submitted, there was a couple of things that were submitted late that Ellen needed to make sure got paid this week. One of them had to do with something from economic development, and then I think there was something with the light department. She's not here, so I don't have it back, but...
Well, the warrant that Ellen asked us to come in and sign prior to voting, is that what this is? Because we should also vote that one.
No, that is listed, sorry, now I understand what you're asking. That is listed... Where is that? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 down, in discussion, possible vote. Just as notification.
Notification of public, approved warrants 2154 BW.
I think we have to vote that warrant. I'd become more comfortable if we vote it with the other warrants. We normally vote the warrants, we don't just sign them. At least, it's not my vote.
We approve all the warrants.
That would be separate from the supplement warrant.
Right, I know, but can we add that to the warrants and vote it like we always do? Because I believe our vote is the actual approval, you know. So the supplement is just something that came up after the first bill warrant was published?
Yeah, once she finished this morning.
Okay, well, we could vote. Go ahead, I'm sorry, thank you.
Which one is it part of? Point of clarity? Supplemented 03BW?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what's on, for approval now.
Yeah, $1,0365.99.
Do we review that?
The one we signed was, will come up under discussion, possible vote.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve bill warrant 2154 in the amount of $134,404.24.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes, January 2nd, 2021. Anybody read that? Read it, and it looked to be in order?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I have not read these minutes, I was doing a lot of the other work for the trash contract.
Do you want to table these until the next meeting?
I would appreciate that, yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, and, yeah, I wasn't here for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. 6 of them, so if Bell was here, that might be.
All right, well, motion to table.
Oh, okay.
Motion to table, or second on motion to table these minutes?
I'll second it.
Yep.
Okay. No discussion on a motion to table. All in favor? Table one. So those will be table till the next meeting. Appointment, appointment of Shawna Gray of Groveland to the position of Assistant Town Clerk effective August 9th, 2021, $21 an hour for 10 hours per week.
I make a motion to approve Shawna Gray to the position of Assistant Clerk effective August 9th, 2021, for $21 an hour for 10 hours per week.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? We do have a letter from the town clerk in support of it, so it's under recommendation. Any other discussion?
The clerk interviewed her, and she wants her?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, she interviewed her with the Board of Registars, also attended the interviews.
Okay, no further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask that we move up the trash, the Waste Management contract to the top, just because we've pushed it off so many times, and I feel there's a sense of urgency to review the edits of town attorney, so we can send it to Waste Management to get this thing rolling?
Okay, with the request to move up the Waste Management contract, and the discussion possible vote, any comments? Anybody object to moving that up? No. Okay. I'll take that up first. Waste Management contract, we, excuse in our packet, hands of paperwork. I have one question on that, but I know Kathy, you know you've been working on this?
Yes.
But this paperwork that we got from Waste Management says, effective October, and I'm referring to this Town of Groveland Trash and Recycling Guidelines, trash set out limits effective October 1st, 2021. All trash will be limited to two 34-gallon barrels, not exceed 40 pounds. Any additional trash must be in an approved, counterapproved. In a counterapproved overflow bag, it may be purchased at a local merchant. Any trash left outside of the two 35-gallon barrels that are not in a counterapproved bag will be tagged and left behind. Question there is, a lot of people put out, instead of barrels, they put out trash bags, is that, will everybody have to go out and purchase a bag, purchase a barrel, or will they still be picking up trash bags that put out?
That's a good question. We should be referring to the edited copy of that amendment sent to us, and I forwarded it to Catherine to provide to everybody, Amendment 1, that has the changes proposed by the town attorney. What he changed with respect to what you just read is down in, looking for it here, the section that has to do with the number of barrels. He's leaving it to the Board of Selectmen to make that change in the number of barrels at the time that we determine it to be appropriate. To date, they've always picked up bagged trash, so I would assume they would still pick up, like, if instead of two barrels, you put out two big bags of trash? Yes. But if you put out five or more regular bags of trash and then two purchased bags, I don't know. So is that a question we want Roy to answer?
Yes, I think my question there would be, if people put out bags instead of barrels, is that...
How do they count it?
Is that still okay?
Okay.
Based on that, doesn't, doesn't state that. Any comments on that?
Yes, Ed.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, I do believe when Roy was here discussing the contract, he did cross-reference barrels to bags in terms of quantity. I thought it was four bags per barrel, but I could be mistaken.
Let's get that in writing then.
Yeah.
So how many bags equal a barrel? Okay.
Four bags per ba...
And it would depend on the size of the bags, just like the barrels. So it might have been two, it might have been two per barrel.
So somebody could...
Since the 35-gallon barrels.
So somebody could put out four, four bags, and would equal two barrels.
I think so, yeah, but...
Or eight.
We should probably get clarification.
We could get clarification on that, I'm sure.
So if you're looking at the Amendment 1 that he sent back to us, the attorney, David Donakis, I believe is his last name, he, the first part of the changes, in paragraph 1, it's just clarification wording, he put into, entered into "by the parties," and the next paragraph, again, just clarification language. And then, in section 1, that's more just cleaning up. He felt that some of the language was a little bit vague, so he cleaned it up, but then he put down here, this is where it talks about the number of barrels. If the town reduces the number of containers to be collected, the town may, at its option, institute an overflow bag program. If it does so, the town shall be responsible for all administrative aspects of the overflow bag program, including but not limited to hiring vendors to produce and distribute bags to residents, as well as setting the bag fee and collecting any monies due from the residents purchasing the bags. If an overflow bag program is instituted, the contractor shall be responsible to collect only town-designated overflow bags that might be set out in addition to the number of containers allowed. Contractor will receive no additional compensation for the collection of town-designated overflow bags. The Board of Health has approved the color purple for the bags, and a charge of $2.50, which will, I forget what the exact amount over the cost of the bags, that is, it might be a dollar extra, or 50 cents extra. I can't think of it off the top of my head. Jason, do you recall what the waste zero bags were?
I thought it was $1.50.
So $2.50 might be a dollar over, yep. So that money would go into the general fund of the town to help offset the tonnage cost. The vote of the board to reduce barrels is critical to try to move more of the tonnage into the recycling, which, at this point in time, is starting to look a little more, I wouldn't call it profitable, but as Roy said, it's better than it was a year ago. A year ago, I guess it was costing us money to recycle, now it's swinging back a little more the other way. But the tonnage cost is high, and when we look through the amount of tonnage that keeps being thrown out in trash, it's increasing in the town, which is driving this contract higher and higher, which will eventually impact the budget for all town departments, because that's where this money comes from. We pay the flat fee for the collection, but then every month, we're billed the tonnage. So we try to estimate the amount of money to set aside at town meeting based on prior year tonnage, but the tonnage has been escalating, and we did review that in the Zoom meeting that, I know you weren't on board yet, Dan, but Ed was in on it and Jason was in on it, and we did go through a pretty exhaustive discussion of the issue of tonnage and the need to reduce below four barrels. Waste Management's representatives said that we are the only town they have that allows four barrels of waste to be collected every week. So that's driving our tonnage right through the ceilings. Yes.
So, and if we don't vote to reduce, it will stay at four?
Correct.
And if we vote to reduce to three or two, could it be phased in?
Yes, that's why the, I...
And my mind was thinking, if I have to go to two, I get a trash compactor and just, you know, put, you know, 500 pounds in a barrel. So if you're paying by the tonnage, it doesn't help, right? So it's, you know what I mean?
The idea is to do...
I'd be stepping on the barrel, I'd get the 20 barrels into one barrel, and...
Okay.
It says 40 pounds.
I'm being facetious, but you know what I'm saying, I just, I don't own a trash compactor, but it crossed my mind. So it's 40 pounds a barrel, so they're not going to pick up the cat litter, because that's like, you know, be burying that in the backyard. Can I do that in constipation?
So, so my question to the board is, do we want to make a vote now on the barrels? Because we would be responsible to notify the town. Right now, Waste Management is notifying the town of the new trash routes. That's happening. That's been approved, it's gone to print. Yes.
I think it ought to be phased. I like to go to four to three and then see how that works and see what the feedback is. I mean, you know...
We could.
The angry mob might show up saying, you know, my trash is, because you say that's two, is it 2.50 a bag, plus there's an upcharge of 1.50?
No, it's 2.50 includes the upcharge of a dollar, we believe, yes.
It's kind of expensive to throw away a bag of trash, 2.50.
Well, we're trying to get people to recycle.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yes.
Groveland's Green New Deal, so, yeah, you know, just, how about just produce less waste?
Okay, so...
Supply side.
We can make that vote at any time.
Yeah, I mean, we need to do it now.
So is the lang, we could do it now if we wish, or we can continue and just review all this, these edits first?
I'd like to have the answers...
Well, I know I have your question, so we'll get that. But is this language okay? Should, because the attorney said I shouldn't send this to Waste Management till the whole board has reviewed these wording changes and said, send it to them. Okay? So that's that paragraph. That, that's the paragraph that deals with and gives us the option on the number of barrels, as everybody...
But we pay the tonnage anyway, so is there a cost savings to us? I mean, I'm looking at it from, let's just say we maintain the status quo.
Yes.
And if we could project a certain amount of tonnage, it's X. Now, if we go to two barrels, I mean, I think we're assuming that the tonnage will drop off.
Well, it will, because it will push it to recycling, and at one point, the recycling was costing more, but in our last discussion, Roy thought the recycling was becoming a less expensive option. So we've got to push it one way or the other. You're right, it goes into one barrel or the other.
Yeah.
So he's suggesting that we asked, how can the town try to manage the cost of this contract? And he suggested that we reduce barrels, because we are the only town they serve that allows four barrels of trash. The amount of barrels of recycling is unlimited.
Is three normal, and what's the norm? I mean, I'm learning Trash 101 here.
I'm not a trash expert, but I...
To cut it in half, I think is...
Big change.
It's a big change, so can we go to three and then see what happens, and subject to review? Everything's subject to re...
Correct.
And if we, say we go to two, can we go back to three, or it's a one-way street?
Nope, this is, this option is open to us. If you read the language, it's our...
So we go up or downstream, and it's...
We just need to notify people, we can't just, you know, blind-sign them, we'd have to bear the cost of notification.
I mean, I'm willing to go and try three and see what we get for feedback. People think they could live with that.
Okay.
That's a 50% reduction.
So, do we want to continue reviewing the wording changes still in this amendment? This is the amendment that they're waiting for us to review and sign.
Yeah, well, we want to amend it to the three.
Well, we, we can do, we can vote the three outside the amendment. The amendment allows us the, gives us the power, we don't have to put a number in here. We just do it and we notify our residents that it's now three, and they put it up on the town website.
And when they put out four, they just put a sticker on it and leave it there?
Yep, exactly.
Is that how it goes?
Yes.
The orphan barrel sits there, and then what?
Orphan barrel sits there until they, they realize that we're not picking that up until the next week.
That's not entirely true.
Uh-oh.
They will tag it and take it the first time.
Ah.
Give you a warning.
So you're aware that they won't take it.
They get a warning, there you go.
They leave you a note or something, saying...
The following week, they won't take it.
Okay.
Now they know for sure that you've been notified, because they notified you.
Okay.
I know with all the missed pickups and the delays, I've been doing a lot of driving around and looking at trash, as well as picking up some trash.
Yeah, you got a truck.
And, but, very, very few people have more than two barrels. Most people only put out one barrel, so it's not going to be a huge impact. You're talking minimal.
I think...
And I think the biggest increase in trash happened when everybody started staying at home and became pleasant and lazy. And this is a way that we can start pushing people to be more mindful of how much they're wasting. I think it's an important route to go, and going back, and going down to do barrels, I think, is a way to do that.
So, do you want me to go on to the next paragraph, the scope of services? He just, he struck some words, and Groveland, Massachusetts Bulk Pricing List is replaced as of July 1st, 2021, with the new Bulk Item Pricing List, as attached hereto as Exhibit C. And I think later on, he put in language that said, if they try to change that again, they have to get our approval. So did everybody have a chance to look at Exhibit C on this? Exhibit C is at the end of, so you'd have flipped to the back of that packet. Okay. Then, Section 5, Labor and Costs, Exhibit V, he put in, this is just standardized... He put in, this is just standardized legal language, that prevailing wage rates are determined, determination issued, attached as Exhibit B. And again, more language of just referring to the prevailing wage schedule and wage and benefits calculations. And it's, again, just putting us into agreement with state law on prevailing wage. Then are the Section 6. Six dot, payment for services. The fee schedule is replaced with the rate table below, effective as of July 1st, 2021, for the term of the agreement. And that is, those are the costs we did review for town meeting. The collection, the flat rate is $389,000. For the first year, it goes up to $430,000. Second year, $480,000. Third year, $542,000. Fifth year, $606,000, fifth year. So a big part of this contract is that flat collection rate. Then on top of that, we will be charged for tonnage. In the first year, $81.50 per ton. Year two, $84 per ton. Year three, $90 per ton. Year four, $95 per ton. And then year five, $103 per ton. Okay. And the language is just cleaned up a little bit below that. And then he has the recycling charge and rebate formula. And he's required to submit to the town representative for approval a list identifying the areas of town to be served, the order of collection, the days of collection by area, the streets within each area, and any route changes must be approved by the town representative. The contractor acknowledged that there had been several service days on which complete collection has not taken place, resulting in waste not being collected on the scheduled day and remaining uncollected for one or more days, and even several days in some instances, all of which has resulted in numerous resident complaints to the town's Board of Health, its clerk, and other town officials. Contractor has proposed route changes in order to balance the daily route changes, oops, sorry, lost my place, routes more evenly and address the issues of uncollected waste. The town has agreed to allow the route changes, subject to the following. The contractor shall submit to the town, for the town's approval, a written description of all the changes. That has already been done. Following the town's approval, the contractor shall, at its, at its cost, notify all town residents of changes by an informed flyer or brochure mailed to each resident. Okay, Section 10. The following sites are added to the list. And then it has the signature. I'm looking for the, oh, now I'm losing my place. The place where they speak about if the trash is not collected. Let me just find that for you. I think I put that under my notes.
Page one.
The charge? I didn't-
Operating procedures, missed pickup, Section 5.
Thank you. Okay, did I forget to read that? Let me go to that.
Cash question?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Kathy, do you have any knowledge or information about, I mean, how effective is that recycling formula? In terms of what amount of money or percentage do we, do we get back? I mean, have we gotten back? I mean, is it 5% of the bill or 10%? Or is it negligible? Is it, is?
Off the top of my head, I don't have those numbers.
Paul Park, do you have any stab in the dark of that?
The stab in the dark is that I recall from our meeting with Roy that in the prior year, it had not been cost-effective. But this, during this current year that we've been under, the formula was swinging more our way.
So we didn't get a credit in the past year? It has to break a certain threshold or it's just we don't get a credit?
No, this year, I thought during this year, we were getting something. That's my understanding. What was your, did you have the same?
It's a commodity, so it changes on whether or not it's being purchased. If nobody's purchasing recycling, then we're not getting a credit.
I understand, but did we get 10 bucks on, you know, on the extreme?
This past, this past year, nobody was, there was no market for recycling, so we got nothing.
We got zero, okay.
So, so the things are changing now and the market's picking up, so we will potentially see-
How long have we been doing this? I mean, you know, did we get a credit five years ago and we got 100 grand? I mean, is there, is, can it put a dent in it or it's just?
I believe it's a moot point, because as far as I know, it's required by state. They govern whether or not we recycle. I don't think we can't.
So whether we get paid or not, we have to offer it?
I do believe.
But it's not really an incentive financially?
Yeah, it is. It can be. It's cheaper to right now.
Well, it saves us on the tonnage. So there's a silent opportunity cost there that if you recycle it, then we're not paying the tonnage, right? So that's zero. Even if we don't get a penny back, we save the tonnage. Is that true?
If we reduce tonnage in any manner, we save-
And recycling doesn't count?
Well, recycling can reduce tonnage. If you take recycling out of the tonnage-
But then we weigh the recycling, is what I'm saying.
No, it's not, that's not included in our tonnage charge, correct.
All right, so it takes it off the scale.
Right, it does, it does.
All right, thank you.
You know, and at some point, I mean, initially-
Any money back or not, it's, it still saves us the tonnage. So it is, it is significant. It's 100 bucks a ton.
And it's certainly something that in the longer term during this contract should be looked at by our town administrator, because some towns are, are going to do the recycling on their own. In other words, they're deciding to do the recycling, have the recycling brought to the town site, and they're taking the, whatever money you get for it. So there's, there's a lot of options. Initially, you can have one company do trash and one company do recycling. Right now, we're just rolling over the same contract. So we don't, we don't really have a lot of options on the recycling side. They're going to tell us whatever the going rate is and that's what we get. But he did clean up some language, because he said that on, in my notes here, I said that on Section 16, on the recyclables. The language that they said he didn't, did not make sense. They said something like up to something, but it didn't clarify it. So he changed it. Also, he asked me, and I did send to Roy, that certain, we were, in our first contract, plastics numbers one through seven were all acceptable. In the amendment, plastics number one, two, and number five are acceptable. So all of a sudden, number four, six, and seven are no-go. And I'm not an expert, I don't know what that means, but it confuses me. I've been throwing all my plastic in recycling. So there is a penalty if we contaminate over a certain amount of recycling. There is a penalty to the town. So I wanted to make sure that our residents unknowingly wouldn't cause that to happen. And so I've asked him to clarify. He actually asked me, what did we change? So I told him and I'm waiting for a response on that. But I believe in here, there is the $50 charge for a trash not picked up as a penalty. The attorney says he picked the $50 as like an expensive parking ticket. I believe after the, they've been notified that trash was not picked up, they have in the existing contract, like a one-business day to rectify the situation. And he would, he does expect them to push back on that. The $50 charge. But our residents have asked for this. And I think that, given the number of complaints, I'm in favor of a penalty for not picking up trash.
I'm not arguing with-
Oh, okay.
I just, if he is expected to push back, is it because it's unprecedented? This is Waste Management, I mean, they're big, you know, publicly traded company. Are they going to just say, take it or leave it? You know?
Well, I asked him about the discussion of the contract and the discussion of the services and whether or not this can always be an open session. And he said, we can always discuss this in open session.
Yeah.
At any time that we feel the service isn't meeting the contract, we can discuss it in open session.
Yeah.
But we would have to notify them that that was, is what we're saying.
I'm okay with it fine. I mean, they give them 24 hours to cure and if they don't cure, they-
Correct.
Whack them. Get a credit anyways.
Right, so what I asked in looking at the complaint log is the only log they're looking at right now or that they keep in front of him is the log from the 800 number, not the log of the complaints that our Board of Health is sending to their representative. So I've asked him to merge both logs. So we have a complete list. And he has not responded on that yet.
Okay, how, how do we want to proceed?
Well, if everybody is comfortable with this and these changes, we send this directly to Roy. Catherine can send it directly to Roy, take out the red line or leave the red line, I guess, say, this is what we want. So we make a motion to approve this and send it to Waste Management.
Are you going to want to add a three-barrel limit? Man, that's suggested.
Well, the attorney said that we, the power is already in the amendment for us to vote that separate from, we don't have to put the barrels in this amendment. This amendment gives us the option. And then we just post it on our website and notify residents.
And also in-
The four barrel is the top. That's going to stay, the max. And we can lower it at any time.
And we need to ask about-
Bags to barrels.
Trash bags? And do they equal two barrel, two, two per barrel or?
What's the equivalency? Yep, yep. So we have that question.
How about a motion?
One more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Unless I missed it, I apologize if I did. I mean, the 250, the town gets all of that money?
That's a separate vote. The zero waste, we need to vote that separate. That's not in the amendment. That's not in the-
Not in the amendment.
Right, that's separate from the contract with Waste Management. It's a different company.
So we don't have to do that? And if we were to do that, the town keeps that money?
Yes. Well, we pay for the bags and then we keep the additional fee.
If there's a bump in price above the cost.
Right, that's, well, the Board of Health Chairwoman Deb said, use $2.50 and choose purple bags.
Of that 250, does Waste Management get the 250?
No, this amendment also says they get none of this.
They get zero.
They get zero from this. And they have to pick the bags up.
They have to.
And there's no limit on those bags.
Interesting, because they know that they're going to be limited because they're pricey. But they get the tonnage.
It will add to tonnage, but we'll have collected a small additional fee at least.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, how about a motion?
You want me to move it? Okay, I make a motion that we approve the edits as presented to us from KP Attorney and that we send this to Waste Management Representative Roy. Can't think of the last one, bad on names. And we add the additional question for Waste Management to respond that what is the equivalent of four barrels in terms of bags? We want to know the equivalent, because we can always take it down from there. We want to know the bag-to-barrel equivalent.
I'll second that.
A motion seconded. Any further discussion? John?
No, I'm going to sit and wait. I have a lot of questions about it. One of them is you guys and you said it-
John, why don't you come up to the mic? Introduce yourself.
Well, I, I've been thinking about this a little bit, trying to find out on this, the trash situation. And I don't know, I, I do work, a lot of work for trash companies. So you hear, and, and one of the issues that I've had was five, six weeks ago, I tried to get a contract, Capital Waste wanted to bid it, Mellow Disposal wanted to bid it, and no paperwork came out. So I don't know. And then I hear they're just going to give it to them. But you already said, like, you guys don't really know Trash 101, right? You're comparing all this, but you've got nothing to compare it to other than conversation of four or five people. And somebody should talk to one of these other companies and find out how bad we're getting screwed or we're not. Okay? Because there's all kinds of numbers here that I just heard that's going up and up and up and up for four or five years. And we're just giving to them. You know, they're, they're driving the bus. You've got nobody else, you're just going along with what they tell you you've got to do. I was kind of thinking that somebody really should get in touch with them or if you want, I could probably have somebody give you a call, because you guys have a lot of information that you're only being told by one company that's what they're going to charge you. And you've either got to agree to it or not. So as a, as a citizen, I guess I'm wondering, where the heck is the money going? And why are they? Alls I've heard was, they're not picking up this. They're not, I saw a thing on Facebook about a cardboard pile that, you know, they didn't, they left it because they didn't want to pick it up. Well, the guy brought it to the curb. They say it can't fit in the truck. I pretty much definitely, from what I could see, could. So why do these drivers, who's in charge of what they're going to pick up, what they're not going to pick up? Is it too good, too big? And, you know, I think that's wrong. I think somebody needs to get in touch with a, a trash company or they should put this out somehow to bid before everything's done. I, just my thought on it. It never went to bid and it hasn't gone to bid for quite a while. There's a trash company in town. Never even got a shot at it, so. They get 200 trucks. My thought.
Do, do you want a response?
No.
I like to tell you the truth.
What's that?
I like to tell you the truth.
Sure.
Okay, good. So we, we, this year, had anticipated that this would go to bid. That was the plan in the fall. And we hired staff. And unfortunately, what we thought was getting done did not get done.
Okay.
So we found ourselves in the unfortunate circumstance of not being able to have the, I would assume I called, I don't know the legal term for the notification time. So as to not disrupt trash collection, this contract allowed us to roll it over one more time. So we did negotiate, because initially, the, the first cost that was put before us was quite a bit higher. And we pushed back on that. And that's when we also pushed back on how else can we lower the cost. And I, I agree with you 100%. I don't like that we're in this position any more than you do. But the collection of trash is a significant service in town. And in order to put out to bid, we would have had to have the right amount of time prior to the end of this contract to notify the current vendor. And we found ourselves, unfortunately, in the situation that we did not have that. And we have been trying to confer with attorney all along the way. So if you have a specific question that you would like us to ask the town attorney, I'm glad to forward it.
One of the questions, I think, was if, if you've got, and everybody drives by these trucks in Groveland, the rubbish trucks, there's a, it's a company out of Boston. And I think if you ever even talked to one of them, the people, if somebody reached out to either Mellow Disposal, which is in town, been here 35, 40 years, great people, Capital Waste, and said, hey, we've been put in the position that we are now on the short end of the stick and we've got to kind of know. But I called two months before, spoke to a couple people. Board of Health was very helpful, were trying to get me something. Kevin never returned the call. And trying to get a contract to give to these people so that they knew what to bid against, nobody got back to me. And then all of a sudden, I get a, a response that, hey, we're under the gun. They're holding a gun to our head. We've got to give them a yes, no, or indifferent. But why didn't somebody reach out to these companies and say, all right, if they pull the plug on us right now or in the end of the month, at the end of their contract, could you step in at this dollar amount? I mean, that's just kind of like a business. Do you have a backup plan? There's no backup plan for the town of Groveland. And you've got two-
No, you're making good comments and, and they're, they're well-spoken.[1724.41] It's not, this is not the way we had anticipated or planned for this contract to go. We expected to be able to have competitive bids. We were unable to achieve that. Okay? And that's as much as I can say about that. But we can certainly ask town attorney if we are able to look at other companies without bidding to see what it would cost us. I don't know the answer to that question. But if that's a question you want asked, I'm in favor of asking it.
I mean, I can, I can get in touch with both of those, the other two companies, and have them get in touch with, I don't know who you would get in touch with here at the town.
It's us.
Is the selectmen, and, you know, but they can get in touch with the selectmen's office and say, listen, here's what we're, here's what we're paying. Can you do something? Can you help us? Or is what we're doing just, that's the, that's what it's going to be? And it sounds like if somebody would just be able to reach out, or if you want them to reach out to you, they can do that, too, I'm pretty sure.
Right.
I've been asked probably once every two weeks, have you heard anything? Do you know anything?
I don't know, because normally, in a bid situation, everything's sealed, and the other company wouldn't know what cost this company had given us. Which, now, this is going to be public. This is all out in the open right now, public.
Yeah, good.
So they know exactly what, what the terms of this agreement are. And I, I'm not an expert, so I don't know what else we're allowed to do. You understand?
Just sitting here, listening to this, is kind of, it's, it's a little frustrating, because I really don't know, you say they're going up, and you've got five years' worth of numbers that they're going to go up, go up, and go up. And you're talking about this recycling thing. The truck they have in this town right now is a half a truck, because half of it's recycling, half of it's rubbish. It's a two-hour wait at the landfill over there to dump your truck. So if he fills it by nine o'clock, he's not coming back till 11:00. And then he comes back, and he can only fill half a truck. You know, he can, you can't fill half. And then the other half be half full, you gotta, you can't put any more rubbish in it. You've got to go dump it.
Correct. So he, they have claimed that they can redistribute the routes and complete the trash pickup on the days that they say. If they're unable to do that, and we document that, and we meet with them, then we can go further, if you know what I'm saying. That I checked with the attorney. We do have to give them the opportunity to change the routes, which we just have done, and to say that they're going to complete the town on the days that you're scheduled. If that does not happen, that will be documented, and we will meet with them, and we will advise them that they are now not following their contract.
Okay, so how do you know whether or not that truck is going to meet? Is it just going to go by the response of the townspeople off of Facebook or calls to the Board of Health or all the rest of it? Do they have anybody looking to see?
It's difficult, yes, I, I hear you completely. They do have an 800 number, but I'll be honest, I called it once and got through in 10 minutes, and the second time, I was told I had to wait 20-plus minutes. So Board of Health seems to be answering a little more quickly. But we do get a log from the 800 number. And our Board of Health clerk has been doing an amazing job documenting and logging every complaint.
Okay.
I believe the chairman has that log. Is that correct?
Thanks, John.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. And we have a second. Any further discussion? Dan, I'm sorry, Dan, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, I just got on the board in May, and, you know, I don't know what the timeline is for the, putting out the bids, and, but if the disclosures are out, is it too late? So, I mean, it's worth a question, the town council, if, you know, is it too late to have other companies, you know, give us a price on tonnage without violating any laws? I don't want to break any laws.
We can ask them.
You know what I mean? So, I mean, we could find out, and is it an 11th hour thing? Maybe we could save some money on tonnage, but, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
No.
Is it worth a quick question? Is it too late? If it's too late, then, yeah, we got a, seems like a unilateral contract going on, and not a lot of leverage. You lose leverage when there's no competition, but woulda, shoulda, coulda, you know? I can't sit here and Monday morning quarterback what happened during the pandemic. I didn't, so I'm not going to, is what it is. We got to see if we get the best deal at this point. What does Waste Management charge in other towns? You know? What is the going rate on tonnage?
You want to, you want to put this out to get some answers?
I think so. I mean, I don't necessarily want to stall, crawl, and do nothing at all here, but I just, if we could ask that question to town council, and if we're just too late, a day late and a dollar short, and we're SOL, then that's just the way the cookie crumbles, and I'm going to have to live with it. But, you know, what's the going rate on tonnage and the escalations? Looks like they're going up 20%, you know? Looks like they're going up a solid 20%. So is that the, just the state of the union, and trash is expensive, and commodities? Everything's going up. But I don't want that to be an excuse for gouging. You know what I'm saying?
The one thing that I did want to say is, is this went out to bid not that long ago, because Hilton's lost the ability to pick up, and that's you, who used to be the trash company here. And when it went out to bid, Waste Management came in $130,000 under the next nearest bid. So even though this increase...
So that happened last year?
No, that was 2016.
Years ago?
2016.
So they were competitive?
Well, they were more than competitive.
Yeah, they were more than competitive.
So they weren't, you know?
And so when, when this initial increase, which was supposed to be 7% each year for the next five years, was looked at with, by the current town administrator, it was within reason from what the other bids were, without any increases. And so that's why he recommended staying with Waste Management.
Yeah.
And when we got to negotiate with Waste Management, we asked them to do a lower percentage at first, because we knew we were heading in a tough year, and we needed that extra money this year, and would pick it up at the end of the year.
Kick the can, we deferred it.
Yes.
Give us some lead time, but we got to...
So it was, it was worked on, and it was, it wasn't just half-hazard, put together by us.
But...
Like it sounds when we're sitting here talking about it now.
Is, is...
John, you got a question?
John.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, huh? I mean, does anything strike you, what, what was said here about the price per tonnage as being excessive? I mean...
You know, I'm not, I'm not...
And again, I'm, I'm a tax guy. I don't know, I don't know tonnage on trash. I don't know.
I've been doing this myself for 40, 40 years. But if you're gonna, if you're gonna do something like this, and live numbers, you've got to have more than just one of, it goes free. And this has never been done, it's almost like what was done last time. You've got to have three competitions, you've got to have...
Thank you.
I think what we could find out, if we put it off one more week, meeting, at the very least, we could ask town council that question, which shouldn't be that expensive to get an answer. They probably know. And also, you know, I'll, I'll try to find out what's the going rate on tonnage. You know, I could look at some other contracts, look at other, you know, other towns. It's public record, right? Other towns, I mean, what's the going rate on tonnage? If it all comes in $80 to $100 a ton, then we're stuck. It is what it is. Cheeseburger's X, it's just what it is. You know, you...
Something that we could put off?
Actually, yeah. I would, we've signed a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah, so we can't negotiate outside. It's a good thing, so I don't...
Well, yes, so I wanted to just offer some information to the... So we went back and reviewed our tonnage and our costs. Going back, this should go all the way back to the beginning of our contract, if I'm not mistaken. I'm just looking for that, if I still have it.
Good thing, Mr. Chairman.
So, yes, so the initial was $82.50 per ton. And we got it down to $81.50 per ton. I don't think the tonnage cost is the driving force on the contract. What struck me was the increase in the collection fee. Going back, it looks like, yes, because, no, is this correct or not? $318,984 was the current collection fee. And he felt, he said they way underbid that.
For resident?
No, that's for the town. So they, they charge a flat fee that takes into account to pay the prevailing wage to collect the trash, how many days, how many hours. So the, his claim was that they way underbid that. The tonnage cost is not really driving that fast, especially in years one and two. And he brought it down quite a bit in the revised proposal when we pushed back. So what we asked is to spread out the collection fee, that increase that he wanted to jump to, to spread it over the five-year period so that budgetary-wise, we wouldn't be impacted too much. So the question, probably, the most appropriate question would be, you know, can another company collect all the trash for a lower flat fee? The tonnage cost probably won't be that different.
Well, if they're subject to the same prevailing wage law, it's kind of price fixed.
Right, well, that's...
Unless they can do it any quicker and drive the truck quicker.
Right, so, I mean, I think it's worthwhile to ask the town council if we're allowed to look at other costs from other towns.
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm assuming it's a free country. We can certainly look and become informed, but we're on a path to let them change the routes.
Yeah.
And now we're, we have language in this amendment that holds them to collect the trash on those days. And when they fail to do so, they have one business day to rectify. And when they fail to do that, there's a penalty. And then if we feel the penalty is getting implemented, or maybe they won't pay it, I don't care if it's a dollar or 50, that is our evidence of a contract that's not being adhered to. Then we can talk in open session about other options, including going out to bid. That's what town council said to me.
Let's start to wrap this up. It's time to get repeat comments. So we have a motion?
Yes.
Second. We want to approve, the motion to approve this agreement with questions that need to be forwarded to Waste Management and Town Council. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous? We revert to regular order of business. Town Administrator Search Committee comments and requests. Joe, I think this is you.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you again, Chair, members of the Select Board. We had one meeting of the Town Administrator Search Committee. I was appointed, privileged to be appointed as the Chair. I don't plan on providing you with updates after every meeting, but I wanted to provide this important update after the first meeting, because there is one item that I'm going to ask you to make a decision on, just so you can kickstart our search committee in a very important issue. There is another decision that you may have to make, but that's probably a week or two out. So let me, let me go through this, not a lot of information, but let me share this with you. The, the bylaw that was written by the Government Study Committee allows for a four-vote majority to hire a town administrator. So we want to kind of understand that. That's wonderful. That's a great concept for stability. It's a vote of confidence. And to terminate a town administrator, we need a four-vote majority as well. Embedded in our bylaw, in our proposal also, was that the search committee was supposed to be five people. Well, we got a little enthusiastic. We have nine amazing people. So there's plenty of hands on deck to do the work. But here's where I need a little bit of help. When we looked at the Section 1 of our bylaws, very little language in there. We can create a search committee, which we did, and that search committee can do basically one thing. It can recommend candidates. But it is totally silent on the power to interview candidates. And because it's silent, I would wish for the Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, to consider voting on that matter as a charge. You know, give us that specific charge. If you guys want to interview people, go ahead. You've got nine people, plenty of hands on deck to get the work done. So that's probably the only immediate request I have for tonight. Now, some other issues that came up was really interesting. I, I had no idea that the, our meeting was going to open up about this, but we spent about 45 minutes at our first meeting talking about our concern about liability and doing the job right in terms of, you know, interviewing people, going through resumes, preparing questions. So one thought that we came up with, which is going to be an agenda item for tomorrow night, is perhaps hiring a consulting firm. And we have one consulting firm that was suggested by one member. Now, I'm not advocating for this. I'm presenting, as an individual or as a committee member, I'm just sharing that this is what came up last meeting. We're going to talk about it tomorrow night. So let me give you a quick rundown as to what this particular company would do. They sent us an email. They did put a price tag of $6,000. And they will do the following seven things. Determine the qualities that you seek in a town administrator. Possibly find additional candidates. Assist in evaluating candidates. Organize and manage the interview process, including appropriate questions and topics of inquiry. Making sure that we're complying to open meeting law. Assistance in helping the screening committee select finalists. Review of candidate references and assistance to the Select Board in their interview and selection process. So this is what this firm would do. Again, I'm not proposing that to you. I'm not asking you to make a decision about it. We're going to talk about it. Because there's actually two other potential choices. One of them is the Collins Center. And the Collins Center will provide some of the support that I think our search committee will need. And I'll talk about this with them tomorrow night. And, and the Collins Committee will do the bulk of the work for free. And then for a few hundred dollars, will provide services such as background checks and also education. And then the last thing is, we, we may have to explore using our town council. Perhaps without additional billable hours, they can provide some additional services as part of their service to our town in terms of background checks. That I, I don't know. But again, that's not a decision you need to make. I just want to kind of bring you up to speed. And then tomorrow night, we're going to vote on which one of those three. I won't reveal which one I'm leaning towards. It would be unethical for me to do that. But I think we're going to have a very good discussion. But I will tell my members what I'm going to tell you now. And please make sure that you verify what I'm about to say with town council. I am a certified financial planner. I am not an attorney. But I did a little bit of research. I think the concern that some of the members may have about liability is really not necessary. Why? We have three protections. Number one, immunity under Mass Torts Claims Act. We are special municipal employees. When we got sworn in and you gave us a charge to create a search committee, we instantly became special municipal employees. That gives us three protections. Number one, we have immunity under Mass Torts Claims Act. Please confirm that with town council. I'm not an attorney. I also believe we have qualified immunity through federal and state civil rights laws. And then unless we do something really bad, like defamation or something criminal, we've got protection from the town's insurance company as well. So I'm going to present that tomorrow night, kind of take down the temperature. I think the discussion was healthy. It was legitimate to be concerned about liability and making sure that, you know, we ask the right questions and don't ask the wrong questions. And, you know, how do we handle sensitive information? But nine people, and the resumes on that search committee, we can do the work substantially ourselves. That's my opinion. I'll offer that tomorrow night. And maybe we'll get a little bit of help either from Bill Hewig or Collins Center, or if it is the wish of the search committee, I'll remind them, I'll have to bring it back to you, because ultimately, you would have to say yes, because you hold the purse strings. We might say, we definitely want a search committee. You are going to say, it's not in the budget. Go back to the drawing board. So that's, that's all I needed to present, and I'll take questions and comments.
Anybody got a question for Joe?
Well, actually, I think, based on what you were telling me about the liability, I think that releases all the individual members of liability, but not the town itself. So I think that's something that we should consider as well. Maybe town council can confirm that as well. The other thing is, the Board of Selectmen's meeting with town council tomorrow. Is that correct?
Right.
To go over this and the guidelines of which we should operate in terms of...
What do you mean, guidelines?
And finding a town administrator.
Yeah, okay. That's fine.
So I think before we made any decision, I think we have to have our meeting tomorrow as well.
Okay, great. The only thing I ask, whether you do it as a vote tonight, and we're not interviewing anytime soon, but within a couple of weeks, if you can give us a charge and say, if you folks want to interview candidates, then I can bring it back to the search committee and say, okay, we have that specific charge. Then I can coax them into actually doing most of the work.
Yes.
As volunteers.
I think that's something we'll be able to do after we speak with Bill tomorrow.
We don't, you don't think we can, because to me, this is, we've done this before when we did the hiring of the fire chief. We empowered that committee to, to, to go ahead and interview the candidates and bring us who they thought was the best. We did this before, and we hired, 30 years ago, we hired our first finance director. We had a five-member committee. Just do those screening interviews. I, I'm all in favor of making sure you have the right kind of questions, because I know in today's litigious... in today's litigious society, you need to be very, very careful. That I want, but I think it's fine to say to them, we would expect them to do, I mean, I expect like a Zoom interview. I don't expect you to be pulling people in here. Right now, first interviews are typically a screening interview or done on Zoom. That's my understanding.
Yeah, I think, again, I think because this was a request by the town council, I think it's something we should hold off until we get the actual clarification from town council.
Oh, you think, okay, because town council wants to weigh in on whether they can interview or not?
I think they want to weigh in the whole process.
Okay.
So I think that's going to-
I did not understand that. Okay.
I mean, I could be wrong, but we'll find out tomorrow.
Well, we'll find out in one day.
Either way, we can make a decision at that time and-
24 hours.
Put together a proper charge for the committee based on our meeting, and we can forward that to you after that meeting.
Yeah, and that's fine. We don't have an emergency. We can operate tomorrow night, discuss what I've said we're going to discuss. We might even start going through some resumes and, and then within two weeks, we're going to need a, a real solid charge in writing.
I definitely would like to get that to you well before that.
So we can put everybody at ease and we can get to work.
Dan?
I agree with Jason that we should talk to town council and at least see what the parameters are, and maybe there's a boilerplate list of questions to ask and, and things to stay away from, so you have some guidance. But if we could get that directive and that checklist, so to speak, matrix, whatever it is, you know, we don't want to step in anything and, you know, there's, I don't want people, you know, suing the town for discrimination. You didn't pick me because of whatever, you know? And that's, that's the world we live in, identity politics on steroids. So we need to play some defense. I think we need town council's input on that, and we're going to do it once and do it right. But certainly, I think the committee, you know, at a cursory exam, I'm okay with, you know, doing, doing the screening with some guidance and some input from town council and as to how to proceed with it. But ultimately, it comes back before this board. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's how I see it.
And if you want to deliver-
A little disrespect, Joe, but I wouldn't want you to pick the person.
I know, I know, no, no. No, I, I just, I didn't even think about it. They were just, they brought up some really good points. And if you want to, if you put it on the agenda, you want to deliver a charge, you can ask me back, and I'll come back on a, on a Monday or Tuesday.
But if it's going to cost six grand, I mean, it's kind of a, that wasn't anticipated, was it?
No, I didn't anticipate it. We were talking about staying under 10,000 so we'd have to go through the bidding process. So 6,000 sounds exciting, but zero sounds even more exciting. So we'll talk about the zero-cost option tomorrow night as well.
Profit or something, so you-
The Collins Center, for example, and I think they charge like $350 for background checks. So, yeah, we're, we're volunteers. We're committing our time, and we, we don't want to be the type of committee that we're all volunteers, but we start ringing up billable hours all over the place.
Right.
Anywhere. That's, that's not volunteerism. That's a, that's a burden.
Okay, I'm all set. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned, again, you mentioned background checks.
Yeah.
And my, being familiar with some of that, background checks are usually not done until you narrow down to the final three or four candidates because these, a lot of these people, they have other jobs. And once you start doing background checks, their employer is going to know-
I see.
That they're, that they're interested in moving on, and that could be detrimental to them.
Right.
So, you know, all that stuff's got to be kept confidential until, and whatever, whatever the charge that we would do, at some point, would, do we want three, do we want four candidates brought before the Board of Selectmen for, for final approval? So I, I would be careful on the background checks until you narrow it down. If you, I don't know how many, we'll say you've got 10, and I don't know how many you've got. But if you had 10, and you started doing background checks on all 10, what's the sense in paying for the 10 when you're not even going to bring 10 forward? Wait until you get down to three or four.
I, it's a great, great advice. Thank you. Makes sense to me.
Anybody got any more comments for Joe? Seeing none?
One, one other thing, again, not a decision tonight, but people are funneling resumes digitally to our town, and one of the agenda items tomorrow night will be, should and could one of our search committee members have access digitally to incoming resumes in a protected fashion? I mean, it's like an inbox out there somewhere, and we have to be careful not to publicize resumes, but I believe that there will be at least one or two members that would be willing to take on that additional duty of policing and collecting through the digital inbox as to where the resumes are coming in.
Well, we have-
Which are separate from other resumes for other jobs, I believe, I hope.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
We do, we have a separate box, no, right? So, and we have, I believe, what, four department heads on the committee, so-
Right.
They're in the town hall, they have access.
Yeah, this committee is stacked. We're going to, we're going to get to work. Don't worry.
Yeah, so I, I think that would be workable, especially if you utilize one of our town employees who's already, you know, in the town system anyway.
But the committee is also respectful, and we feel that that should be included in the charge.
Okay.
Okay, just like, if you can just help us, you know, here's the charge. I'll come back here and I'll accept your charge formally at an open meeting, and in the meantime, we're not, we're not going to be twiddling our thumbs. We're going through resumes. We're going to get some key decisions finished tomorrow night, and then we're off to the races. All we need is a charge, and it's showtime.
What's your timeframe?
We're going to probably meet the following week.
No, I don't mean that. I mean to completion.
You know, that was a discussion item also. Should we have a deadline on resumes? How does the, how does the board feel about that? Should we have it open-ended? Should we stop accepting resumes? That was, again, also part of a charge. We, you know, we, we had different opinions.
Most of them are, would be listed open until filled. Position open until filled.
If that's the pleasure of the board, I'll communicate that.
Well, I don't know if it is. I just made that suggestion.
Yeah.
Usually, that's the way it reads.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yes, that's exactly what it does read, and that's what we had agreed to, that because it's so urgent to fill this position, that once you have, I think you have 10 or 11 resumes right now.
I see, just open-ended.
Right.
Rolling.
Yes, I mean, you can continue checking, but once you have a, a number of people that you feel would fit the bill, we have an urgent need to fill this job. So we don't have anybody in position now. That's why it was labeled that way, in order that we could continue. Because if for some reason you recommended three finalists, right, and we then scheduled them to come in, and we interviewed them, and during that process, two of them drop out, and the third one we didn't want, we want the resumes to still be rolling in. We don't want to have to start over again. That was, that was at least my thought process on that because we have an open position that we need to fill, critical position in town. We've had this before when we had two finalists come forward, and fortunately, only one dropped out on the fire chief, so at least we had one left. But we didn't have a choice. We had one, and he was very good choice, but we had one. So my concern is to make sure that we take care of the town business here and get a town administrator hired. That's why it's not a deadline. And I think that's appropriate.
The flip, the flip side of that is, I did read a lot of them that did have deadlines. And because we want to get somebody in there quickly, and we want to make sure we get the right person, if we set a deadline, we have to accept resumes until that point. And if we find somebody that you feel, the board, that your board feels that you want to move forward, and we can't do so until the deadline.
I see.
And then that person potentially could take on another position, or we could lose that position. So being open, we're not really restricted. And either way.
I'll bring that back to the committee, and I'll, effectively, by consent tonight, that's, that's your decision, it seems like, at least by consent. And that's perfectly understandable to me. Makes sense.
Okay.
Dan, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, I mean, my, my input on it is, if you have somebody good, I think you just kick them up, and you just send them up. You know, anybody's good, it's going to be busy. So it could be a snooze-you-lose, so I agree again with Jason tonight. I mean, if you, you wait for a deadline, waiting for buses, I say, sometimes, you know? And we don't want to miss the bus. So if you've got somebody that's outstanding, a good fit, I think you send them up, and first in time, first in right. I mean, it's always a, potentially, somebody better coming around the mountain, but the bird in hand's better than two in bush, so, you know, if, if you've got somebody good, I think you kick them up, and we screen them at our discretion, and if we pull the trigger on hiring them, so be it. There might be somebody absolutely superlative that's second, but a day late and a dollar short. So I don't, you know, it is an urgent thing. Time is of the essence, but we can't box ourselves into a deadline, and then it's an artificial deadline at that. I think it causes more problems than it's worth.
I think you're right.
So you, you, you get somebody good, don't hide it.
Thanks for coming in, Joe.
Thank you. Appreciate your time and keep you posted. And if it's the pleasure of the Chair on my public comment, I do have some handouts for the Board of Selectmen. I'll leave them with you, Ed, if you, if you want to distribute. Thank you.
We have them.
More paper. Thank you. Just what I need.
Next, Administrator Coordinator's Additional Duties and Stipend Request. We, this was tabled from a previous meeting. The Administrator Coordinator has, has taken on additional duties in the absence of Finance Director, and looking for a stipend. I'm looking for the paperwork. We had, we had a list of duties that have fallen on the Administrator Coordinator. She's limited to 25 hours a week, and regularly has been putting in more than that due to, due to the additional duties and responsibilities that basically falls under the banner that somebody's got to do it, and she's been doing it, and is looking for a stipend. Maybe Catherine could speak on what the stipend request is going to be, is. And just quickly, some of the additional duties that have fallen upon you since we don't have the Finance Director.
The stipend I was looking for was 300 a week. That is fair as far as the surrounding towns I, I looked up and did a salary comparison of about 15 different towns, and that would essentially raise my, my, my hourly to about $30 an hour to take on all these additional duties that I've been doing.
Can you, can you list some of the additional duties that you, you had to take on that are above and beyond what you were doing before?
Oh, sure. I've taken on nearly all the IT issues, whether I, it's something I can handle myself, which pretty frequently it is, or kick it up to the next level where we have to contract out with our IT company that we, we use. I have taken on all of the Finance Director emails, sorting through those, making sure they need to go where they need, where they're supposed to go. I keep track of the HR issues that go on, the day-to-day, that, you know, hiring of a lot of summer help that, you know, Michelle takes on part of it. I take on another big part of it, running query checks, making sure paperwork is filled out properly. You know, we have employees that are going out on medical leave. We have employees that have workers' comp issues. The insurance renewal just came through. That required a, a big chunk of time to go through and make sure that everything is, is checked off and that we're covered in, in the different ways. I've sat with you for, you know, numerous times to, to go over the insurance and make sure that we're all set on that. You know, I, I take part in making sure that things are scheduled and going as smoothly as they can, that where the Finance Director would be doing that, whether it's the project out front, getting the, the concrete project on the step done, or if it's ordering of supplies, or if it's taking care of the, the front signboard. It really is kind of never-ending. You know, there's just all the, all the things that have, that the Finance Director or the town administrator would take on and probably farm out to me anyways, but I'm, I'm taking them on, and I'm, I'm not assuming that role, but just trying to keep us afloat.
Anybody got any questions for Catherine? Dan?
Do you foresee how long this will be until the, is it until the town administrative position? Or was it light at the end of the tunnel? And what do you anticipate the, do you have a projection on the duration and the total cost?
I don't have a total cost because I don't know when the town administrator is going to be hired. I'm hoping and praying it's going to be fast.
Six months? Let's say it was within six months.
Sure. Then the stipend would, would go away and that, you know, that the TA would-
300 a week times 26 weeks, about seven, seven grand-ish, something like that.
Sure.
And if they fill the position, or we.
Yes.
We.
If the position gets filled, I am more than happy to give this all back.
And two months, then that would be curtailed. So this would be meant to be temporary.
Absolutely. Yep.
Jason, you got anything?
My biggest concern is with the stipend, how does that affect the hours? Because right now, you don't have enough hours to complete the tasks. So how does that gain you more time?
It actually is covering the added duties that I'm doing in the, the higher-level work that I'm doing. I was hired $19 an hour to do about six things, and that was it. They're very low-level, if that's what you want to call it, administrative duties, and most of what I do every single day no longer falls under that lower level. I'm doing much higher level. So no, to be honest with you, the hours, the, the hours are what they are because I'm essentially one person at 25 hours trying very hard to fill the position of two, two people, trying to get that work done.
Also, Jason?
Yep.
Kathy?
Yes. First of all, I know how difficult it is to have these discussions in this room on TV. And I, as a member of the board, I would prefer that a subquorum of this committee sits down with you and works this out in more detail to separate out some of the additional duties that I think you probably could do, and some of the additional duties that I feel are best put back with the Board of Selectmen. I had asked about the inbox of the Finance Director months ago, about what was going on, where was this email going, how were we to know as members of the board, the highest level inbox in this town, how is it being reviewed and who is reviewing it? And honestly, I believe this full board should have access to that box. We should delete the box and forward it. I called the IT company that manages the town because I could not get an answer. I think, you know, you probably were told not to answer me, but I couldn't get an answer as to who was checking this box. And the owner of the IT company explained to me that the chairman had assigned the inbox to the accountant and the administrative coordinator. And I understand that the intention of the staff is to get work done. I understand that. However, I'm elected to know this information. When there's not a Finance Director or a town administrator, I feel that it's my responsibility as a member of the Board of Selectmen to see, physically see what's coming through and what needs to be attended to. And by way of point, I, I point to the last meeting we had where there was a item in our packet from the Department of Transportation for our signature, and obviously, it was, needed to be redone. It had the Vice Chairman, Bill O'Neill. It, it was clearly connected to the Community Trails, which is the Town Planner's Project. So I feel that we have a lot of things going on. I feel that our staff is trying to come up with ideas and thoughts, and I appreciate that, I do. I like the fact that they're willing to step up, but I also feel that we need to watch out for the town. So when it comes to human resources, when it comes to an insurance renewal, I would have liked to have seen that information on the insurance renewal as a member of the board. I did not see that. I did not get to vote on that. Workers' comp, I would have liked to have seen some paperwork on that. I, I know the list of things that people are asking you to do is growing at a ridiculous rate. rate. I went through your list and I see that on the first page, with the exception of the IT, it was all in the original description. So, it's really when we get into Page Two that we're starting to put more on you than we should. Scheduling custodial coverage, the Board of Selectmen can do that if it's just a matter of covering when he's taking vacations or something like that. A staffing schedule, we should know when our staff is working. I honestly don't know people's working hours right now. I would like to see that and I feel that it's our responsibility to know that. And I know you take email and phone calls on the weekend. I know, because you take everything seriously and you don't want to let anything go. But I would caution you to not, not give the town all of that time. I don't think that's fair to you at all. Procurement, we already agreed on this Board that Sarah, the Consultant Treasurer, would handle the larger procurement issues because we want to make sure that we're following all the proper procurement laws. And there shouldn't be much on the horizon for procurement, other than the big items, the cruiser and the senior van. So, I mean, we're responsible for putting together town meeting warrants. We're responsible for reviewing job postings. We should be. We are the Town Administrator until we hire one and I'm looking forward to it as much as the rest of you are, because I'd like to take the pile of paper that I'm doing at home and put it on someone else's desk. But for now, I believe we have to assume our responsibility as a Board and that Finance Director inbox, I, as a member of this Board, want to have seen what's coming through that because I did not see any of this information. I did not see the insurance renewal. I did not know that the inbox had been assigned to the Town Accountant and the Administrative Coordinator. And it's not that I think you would do anything wrong, not at all. That's not it. It's just, I feel that it's my responsibility as a member of the Board of Selectmen, the highest Board in the town, to know what's going on and I don't know what's going on. I don't like being in the dark. I feel like we need to be more transparent as a Board and the Board has to vote things. If we decide that these emails have to be looked at by one or more members of staff, we need to vote it as a Board. The decision should not be made off-site from our Board meeting. I bring everything back to this Board on the trash. I just would like to have reciprocal agreements on everything else. So, for that reason, I don't want to address this request now and I'm not saying that it's not valid. I think there is validity to what's going on. I think our staff has a lot on their plate. But I would like to work it out more because I, I agree a little bit with Jason that the hourly rate versus the increased hours, which is more fair? You know what I mean? We want to make sure we do what we can. But I also think that in a subcommittee sitting down, two members of this Board, meeting with the Administrative Coordinator, can have a better conversation about these duties and we can take on, take some of these things off the plate because this is just much too long a list over what this person was originally hired to do. This is not fair and we should not support this. This is an impossible list. And also by experience, she's, you're 10 months onto the job, working in a municipal and to know all the nuances of it, to know everything that you need to know to be able to do everything that's on this list is impossible at this point. You couldn't possibly know all of this yet. The fact that you want to take it on and learn it, I think, is admirable. And I hope you don't look at me as your enemy. I'm not trying to be your enemy, but I do have to speak out for my responsibility on the Board and I need to know what's going through the top email box in the town. I need to know these issues.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion on that?
Well, we're still in a discussion. Catherine does a great job and a lot of things fall on her shoulders and she's very dedicated, answers emails on the weekends, sometimes nine or 10 o'clock at night on a Sunday night or a phone call. And it's, she's, seems to be one that everything just falls in her lap and she's very good about handling everything, pushes it off to where it needs to go or handles it. And they need somebody in the Town Hall that is here and that, somebody to drop in and in the past that see the Finance Director, well, now they see Catherine. And it, she's one of the few that didn't get a stipend for taking on additional work. I know the Town Accountant did, Planning Director did. I know I'm missing others that got a stipend for doing additional work when, when we lost the Finance Director. And this is the only person that I know of that didn't get anything extra. What's your pleasure? I certainly appreciate it and I know, I know the other members of the Board appreciate your, your hard work and dedication.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh. I'm not saying that she got a stipend because she did not, but we did pay her for the hours. She did get paid 30 and 40 hours at different points because she did indeed work that many hours during this time. That did go through the payroll, I believe. I've seen that on the spreadsheet from the accountant. So, we did pay the increased hours, which we are obligated to do. So, that is, that is why I do think that sitting down and working this out in a subquorum of this Board with the Administrative Coordinator, coming back with something that's workable, that we can do, that might involve hours, I think is something that can be looked at because I don't believe in tasking people with more work than they can reasonably accomplish in the work week we've given them. We're certainly operating without staffing right now, but I don't think that this has to be, this has to be defined. We need to define what we're going to have the Administrative Coordinator do and we need to take back those things that properly belong with the Board of Selectmen, even though it is more work for us on our time. And I think that, that discussion and deliberation should belong with a subquorum of this Board.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just have a question. Where does it, the delineation come where it's an executive Board versus administrative work? Because that's where I'm failing to see how the Board can take on a lot of this work.
Well, that's, that's a good point. The Board of Selectmen, obviously, got nothing to do with the day-to-day operations of the business. They, the workers are supposed to be doing that. And, and I know you were hired basically to do administrative secretarial work, work for the Board of Selectmen and you're taking on additional duties. But you're right. Some of these things that have been suggested are not within the realm of the, in my opinion, realm of the Board of Selectmen. They're, the Board of Selectmen is more the management style rather than, rather than the day-to-day operations and shouldn't be involved in that. Certainly, members of the Board of Selectmen aren't expected to be here every day and...
And that's what this would require.
Exactly. And which, which some of these, a lot of these things that you're dealing with do take, that you have to be here every day, that there's somebody here that when a person comes in and they, they don't know where to go and they go to the Administrative Coordinator.
Mr. Chairman?
You had a, you had a motion?
No, I have a question.
Go ahead.
My understanding is you made an administrative decision outside the Board about this Finance Director inbox. Catherine, while I respect your question versus executive and administrative, I've volunteered and worked in this town for 15 to 20 years, so I fully understand the function and operation of the Board of Selectmen, especially when we are in between our top key administrative financial office.
Sure.
We've done that before. We've had that before. The Board of Selectmen does have to step in on some of the administrative tasks, even though we're not here every day. We need to know. We need to be that clearinghouse because if it's not transparent, if we don't know what's coming through and what decisions are being asked from the, from the top position in our town, then we're blind. We're just coming here every meeting and looking at documents that make no sense.
Sure. I think that's probably where the confusion is.
And it's complete disorganization. And that's what I'm seeing now, is a degree of chaos in our agendas and not reflection on you, a reflection of the fact that we haven't channeled some of this information to us and we need to start getting caught up on it. So, we, we do need to have the Board vote everything, Mr. Chairman, that gets assigned to staff so that we're all fully aware and fully on board for this because otherwise we're not operating as a Board as we're supposed to. And my motion on the Administrative Coordinator's request, and we've deliberated and, is to send it to a subquorum to sit down and have a meeting to discuss, to find, to bring this list down to a manageable list and then come back to us with a recommendation, whether it be hourly rate or hours, come back to us with a solid recommendation because right now this list is too many things. We can't possibly put this all on that position. This is just not workable, not to mention some of these, in particular, human resources. She's not experienced in human resources at this point and we need to make sure that we're overseeing that, that we're supervising that and that it's being done appropriately. And if we need...
Okay. Can you state your motion?
Okay. My motion is to send, sorry.
That should be part of discussion, rather...
Yes, I, I'm sorry. I rambled.
What's your motion?
My apology. My motion is to send this to a subquorum of the Board of Selectmen to meet with the Administrative Coordinator and come up with something that will work during the interim period from now to when we bring in the Town Administrator.
Okay. Motion on the floor? There a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Motion on, motion on a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman? We've had several meetings on the issue, so I'd like a hybrid on that. I'd like to approve our request for a stipend on a weekly basis, subject to, and then we could go into that Subcommittee and hammer out details and take away, take things off our plate that shouldn't be on our plate. Maybe, as you say, the Board of Selectmen should have oversight over the inbox. Absolutely. I mean, if some important document just gets sent in there, who's screening it? I don't know. It should percolate up to us. The buck stops here. I, I agree with you. If that's what I think I heard from you tonight, I agree with you. But that's mutually exclusive, I believe, of, she was hired to do something at, I think, $19 an hour and she's, the waters are muddled and it's not $19 an hour work. So, I wanted to get paid in the interim. And again, if you can have the Subcommittee come up with a decision within a month, then it's four weeks times 300. I don't, I don't think it's the, you know, an exorbitant amount of money, but I just, why should you continue, you know, another day or a week or a month or two months to continue with all these responsibilities? And, you know, definition of task, I mean, it's got to this point. And again, it's Monday morning quarterback. Would he should have caught her? I mean, why weren't her, you know, functions and her job defined, you know, a week ago or a month ago or six months ago? I don't know. But here we are today, next play, forward. So, I, I'd like, you know, my motion would be...
There is a motion on the floor.
Yeah. You know, I'll agree with it, but I'm going to have a follow-up motion.
Okay.
To allow the stipend.
Can I just respond?
It, go ahead.
Did you want to speak? Okay. In response, I guess, I think, Dan, that it's short-sighted to just start to throw money at it. I think we need to define, cut this list down to a defined amount of work so that it's clear what we're paying the employee to do and what this employee does not have to do. And also, more importantly, too, liability-wise, tasks that are beyond the experience and, and the perhaps, you know, experience and qualification level should be not put on an employee. We, we don't want to put people in that situation and we are the management of the town and there are certainly levels of responsibility here that we've already assigned higher, but we need to keep going on that. And I believe if we can get, I would like to have a unanimous vote on this. I would like to be all in favor and that's why I pushed for it, a subquorum to compromise it, work it out, bring back something that's clearly defined.
Again, you're starting to repeat yourself.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor to send this to a Subcommittee. We're still in a discussion. I'd like to see an approval, approval of maybe an amendment to the request to approve the, a stipend until it gets, if it gets studied by Subcommittee. And somebody needs to do the work in the meantime and you don't know how long that's going to take. You know, and it was mentioned earlier, like, maybe like a six-month, for, the stipend for like six months to let the Committee come up with a Town Administrator. So, I would, I would like to see, I would like to see, she's doing the work, she ought to get paid for it and I'll just let the Subcommittee look at it at some point, but the work being done now, it needs to be paid, I think. And I think that's, I think that's the first step. I think, I'm not going to support the, the motion. I think that that should, that should be defeated and then get, continue with the, add a stipend of some sort until, until we do a study, take a look at what, what can be done by somebody else. But you have to take into consideration that when you look at that, most of those things have to be done by somebody that's here. And if you, if you're going to ask another person to be doing some of those duties and responsibilities, you're going to have to pay them. So, I would like to see, I'm going to vote no on the request to send to the Committee and, and I'll, I'll support a, I'll support a stipend at the present time till, put a timeframe on it. So, anybody else? Dan?
I think we're going to be at a stalemate. I mean, Kathy, am I reaching out to you there to compromise it, you know? I'm be okay with the Committee, but I mean, you know, I don't think we've acted on this quick enough. I think we discussed this prior to my vacation, if you want to call it that, and...
It's been six weeks.
You know, how many weeks?
Six.
Six weeks? I think, you know, I'm not saying we're dragging our feet on it, but it's, you know, it's time to act. I mean, you know, sometimes you just got to make a decision and live with it. I don't think it's short-sighted. I mean, she's gone six weeks doing this and it's, it's a ship adrift without, you know, any direction, you know? It's, it's...
Well, I'll, I'll offer an amendment to the...
So, I'm okay with Kathy trying to bring some direction and reel it in, but in, in the interim, you got to pay people for what they're worth.
I'd like to respond.
I'll, I'll offer an amendment to Kathy's motion that we should pay a stipend and to get the work done until the, until the Subcommittee comes up with duties and responsibilities that somebody else can, can take on. Well, I'll make an, I'll make a, an amendment to include a stipend of 300 a week until such time as the Subcommittee can, can meet. So, there's a...
I'm sucking that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second for the amendment. Any further discussion? Kathy, you had your hand up?
Yes, I do. So, we went to town meeting. We presented this job. There was discussion of this position. The hours were increased. You asked for that. There was no mention of stipend. We did not budget for stipend. I would prefer that we not start addressing stipend, but we address hours and hourly rates. And I also completely object, Mr. Chairman, to the fact that you made a decision outside of these meetings to assign work to this person and now you're asking me after the fact to pay them for it.
Okay.
That's essentially what's happening.
Again, we...
You've been tasking.
You're repeating, you're repeating yourself.
I'm not repeating. I have never said before that you are tasking. You are coming in the Town Hall and you are tasking and then coming back to us after the fact and asking us to pay the money. And that's the problem right now. We need to be, work as a Board.
Okay. Kathy?
Okay. Call for the vote.
All right. All right, there's a, there's a, an amendment on the floor to include a stipend, three hundred dollars until, a week until... So that, the motion has to be, the amendment has to be voted on first, and then we'll take up the main motion. All in favor of including a stipend for three hundred a week? All in favor? All opposed? Three in favor, one opposed. Now, we have a motion on the floor for, with an amendment, to send this to a subcommittee of the Board of Selectmen.
I have an amendment to that.
Okay.
My amendment is that the information from the finance director email box be forwarded directly to all members of the Board of Selectmen, and that no further tasking be done through the chairman without a vote of the Board of Selectmen during the time that this is being considered.
There's a motion on the floor, an amendment, amendment, is there a, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion on, I have a discussion on that. When I spoke with the IT people, most of this was done at the request of the IT people. They wanted a, basically, a point person to be in contact with them rather than everybody contacting them. And in their discussion with them, they requested that the finance director's emails be divided up between the town accountant, who would handle the money articles, money emails, and the administrative coordinator to handle regular, regular business. So that was all done at their request, at the IT people's request. It seemed reasonable, so that was, that was moved that way. And it seems to be working out pretty well. Hold on, that seems to be working out pretty well. And I think we're down to, what did I get? Down to how many, from like fourteen hundred to...
Oh, we were, we were almost four thousand emails, and now we're down to under fifty.
Hundred and fifty, okay.
No, under fifty.
All right, what is, what's going on now is working. Kathy, you had a question?
I don't have a question, I have information. You're confusing the issues. The point of contact person is from the IT consultant that comes here to help out. Yes, they thought it would be more cost beneficial than if we don't have all of our departments calling at the same time. But I spoke to the partner, who's the owner of the IT, and they were directed to open that email box to two subordinates in the town hall, below the Board of Selectmen. And again, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I feel that decision should've come before us. And that is why, at this time, I want the amendment to have the email box forwarded to the full Board of Selectmen, just so we know.
The motion has already been stated, and to respond on that, we're still in discussion on it. To respond to that, that would, that was, that is putting the Board of Selectmen in part of the day-to-day operations of the town hall, and that, that is beyond the scope of the Board of Selectmen to be handling day-to-day operations. So any further discussion on the, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, how practical is it that, you know, okay, so you send everything to the Board of Selectmen, so am I gonna be reading a hundred emails? And if they're time-sensitive, and I'm not around, I mean, it's just, you know, you know, who's responding? It should be funneled through the next person in command, and if that's the town accountant, then run the financials. So I think you mentioned earlier about, you know, you would've liked to, you know, maybe you brought the workers' comp insurance, you know, or policy or something like that. This board at any point in time can reach down to any department and say, "We'd like to have a, you know, some sort of scrutiny, you know, what's going on with the insurance costs within the town," for whatever reason. I mean, we can reach down and grab that, but I don't know that everything ought to come across our desk first. It ought to be screened at the lower level. And if there's, "Hey, this is above my pay grade and my rank," then, "Hey, Board of Selectmen, this is an important matter that came through my email, and I don't know why I have it." But I don't, I think it's dangerous, and it's beyond our scope of what we do to, you know, have... I don't know if it's fifty emails a day or a hundred, but it could be one that's, has serious ramifications to the town, and somebody who's, you know, got their feet on the ground here, gets paid a salary. I don't, not that I don't wanna be involved, I am involved, but I'm advisory, I'm advisory.
But, Dan, you're...
Kathy, Dan has the floor, please.
Okay, so, you know, I'm advisory. I'm willing to do a little bit more, but it can't be Monday to Friday screening emails that used to go to Denise. It just, it's impractical, uh-uh, impractical, all right? So it just, it's not, that's not gonna work, you know? Should go to the town accountant if appropriate. If something is awry, they contact the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I think that's how it goes. You just can't have five chiefs here and no Indians. I mean, it's just, it's too many cooks in the kitchen. Enough said, Mr. Chairman.
Kathy?
Yes, I, I do follow up, because the problem is the transparency. The problem is that the chairman of the board is privileged to this information, and the rest of the board is not, at least I'm not, I know that. I don't get a response as to who was even looking at the email box. I had to go through the IT company to the head, to the manager. And when that has to happen, when a member of the Board of Selectmen cannot get a straight answer, I get concerned. So my concern is certainly valid, and that's why it's in the form of a motion. I would not go down this route if there was complete transparency.
Mr. Chairman, rebuttal.
Go ahead.
Just as a side point, it's with Chairman Watson is no different than what it was when it was Mike Wood as the chair. That's how it, everything was funneled through the chair. He made decisions, told me when to pass it out to the board and when not to pass it out to the board. It's no different.
Nope, he kept us fully informed.
Dan, had a question?
Yeah, in terms of transparency, I mean, Kathy, in all due respect, I mean, each and every one of the board members here, we're not internal auditors that can go around and just look at every email and inspect everything, this protocol, this Freedom of Information Act, and we have a right to public records to a degree. Maybe personnel records might be protected in some situations, but, you know, the mundane, routine things, I just, I don't... My thinking is that you wanna be able to scrutinize every email coming through, and I don't think you can micromanage the town like that.
No, that's not it at all, you're not understanding.
So where's the transparency? There's no, if it goes through the town accountant, the town accountant has the information.
Right, well, why aren't we getting a report of what's been coming through? Why aren't we hearing about the insurance renewal that she sought with the chairman and worked out? Why didn't I at least get a copy of it?
That's a valid point.
These are, these are my only points. I don't want to micromanage anybody. But we have a very new inexperienced employee here, only ten months in the job, and I just wanna make sure that we are fully aware of decisions that are being made.
Okay, to your point, to your point there, if she could summarize or somehow list out what those are...
Absolutely.
Bring that to the chair, and we all have five copies of the list, you know?
Yeah, I would say that if you're, you're looking for a copy of the insurance contract?
I'm looking to be kept updated on decisions that are being made, outside the meetings.
But the solution isn't for five different emails to come to each one of us.
Not if it can be done differently.
A CC on how many?
Right, I just don't wanna give another task that's now gonna cost us another ten hours, you know?
Well, you know, if we need it done, it needs to be done, I mean, it just...
Okay, there's a motion, we'll have to, we'll wait till Jason comes in.
Jason left. You gotta love Jason. So my amendment then is...
We already stated the amendment.
I'm going to revise it, though, now, because it was to have us all get the email box. Dan makes a point, he doesn't wanna be flooded with email.
I don't.
Okay, so we will get, at our meetings, an updated report on activities from the email box, whatever they may be.
Beautiful.
You say you've brought it down to a manageable level, so we'll get a report, and decisions will be made by the board.
Like I said, if there's something that you're interested in, they bring you up the issue, reach down and get it.
And the subcommittee will complete its work on this issue. This is if I vote to put the stipend in place. The subcommittee will complete its work on this issue no later than... When's our first meeting in August?
Thirty days.
You want thirty days?
Thirty days.
All right, thirty days.
Thirty days. Thirty days, okay, motion, motion on the, an amendment on the floor. Is there a second on the amendment?
I'll second it.
A second.
I'd like to leave the room.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
No. All in favor? Opposed? Three, one in favor. So now we have, we have an amendment, we have the, first amendment was the stipend to be attached to the main motion, and the second amendment also, so to send it to a committee. All in favor of sending it to committee with the two amendments?
Well, what are the two, the two amendments are the one that it's thirty days only, the stipend exists for thirty days till the subcommittee comes back.
The, the two amendments were...
Well, as a resolution, assuming it's a resolution.
Correct, thirty days.
For the stipend and the...
And the report to the board. Yep.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
My chief squad.
Okay, moving on. Assistant treasurer-collector approval to carry over three unused personal days for, for the reason of the inability to take any time off due to the volume of work in the department for many months. Carryover is six, carryover is six months. So the treasurer-collect, assistant treasurer-collector is looking to carry over three personal days, was unable, based upon the volume of work in that department, was unable to use those. Do you have a motion?
What does the personnel bylaw say?
I don't know on that.
Personal days are normally not carried over because personal days are really not part of your, your PTO. I mean, if we ever move to a PTO, personal days are for things that you couldn't, you could not do if you didn't, if you had to go to work, like a doctor appointment. But it's not vacation or sick time. I don't know what our personnel bylaw says, but I don't think we should violate the bylaw.
Well, I know that, that we have allowed days to be carried over last year based upon, actually, like the last eighteen months because of the pandemic, that people were unable to use some of their time off. They couldn't take vacation time because there was no place to go. So we allowed them to carry over and... Because of that reason, you know? I don't, I don't see that the request is unusual. We can, it's a request by one person. Fiscal year has already gone by, and he hasn't used them, so he's looking to use them within the next six months. So is there a motion, motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is a motion to approve the carryover of three personal days. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Yep, motion is approved, a motion to approve it, and a second, is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Kathy.
I'm just concerned about precedent setting. We're in the midst of our union contracts at this time, and I'm looking to see if we do have anything specific in our personnel bylaw. That should've been researched before this meeting, so that we could be informed. We shouldn't vote blind. It doesn't, it's silent on the issue of carryover. What it does say is, "Full-time and qualified part-time employees will be granted three personal days of leave each fiscal period for the purpose of attending to personal business which unavoidably conflicts with employees' work schedule or to observe religious holidays. Employees must provide reasonable amount of advance notice, which would normally be two weeks, to their department head or the personnel officer." And it's silent on the issue of carryover.
Okay. A motion on the floor and a second, any further discussion? Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's gonna be setting a precedence just because the finance department's been so shorthanded. I think that should definitely be something taken into consideration.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the three extra days? All opposed, none, unanimous? Thank you. Next order of business, the rest of this should go pretty quick. Approval of a clerk for ten hours every other, every other week to help out in the treasurer's office. And we can get a...
Ten hours per week, I don't think it's ever...
Ten hours per, oh yeah, it shouldn't say every other.
Every other week.
It's supposed to say per week. Per week, that's incorrect.
Every week?
Yes.
Okay. So looking for a clerk in the treasurer's office for ten hours a week to help with the workload.
Excuse me, Ed, do you have the memo from the finance board?
Um, I don't think I do.
We had stuff in our packet on this. Right, we did, I forget her name, it begins...
I might've misspoken.
I'll just, I'll just read this out. "Please be advised that at its meeting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the finance board voted unanimously to support a transfer of three thousand dollars from the reserve fund to fund temporary part-time clerical assistance for the assistant treasurer. We see this as an unexpected and extraordinary expenditure as the annual budget was set, assuming a full-time treasurer would be in place. Given the absence of the treasurer, coupled with the absence of the town administrator, the finance board believes supporting the treasurer's office is appropriate. The three thousand dollar transfer would fund, would support for two quarters of tax processing as follows: eight weeks, twenty hours a week, at eighteen dollars an hour." Did I read that correctly? "It is understanding that there is a current town employee who is often bonded and has available capacity to fill this role. We specifically ask you to consider joining us in support. We also respectfully request that every effort be made in hiring, in the hiring of the treasurer and the town administrator priority, a priority going forward." Thank you. And signed by the members of the finance board for approval of...
Do we have the form for the reserve fund transfer?
Uh, no.
Do you have those forms?
I don't. The moment the finance board grant approval of the reserve fund to support the treasurer's office...
They're on the finance director's computer. You, that's where they originate from.
So the finance board is approving...
Right, but we need the form. The reserve fund transfer form.
Yeah, they don't have it, this is...
No, but they don't have it, the finance director office does.
No, we'll ask them.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been there forever, it's right on the computer, I'm sure, or in the file draw, we... We did one at the...
Ellen, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I can put one together by the end of the meeting if you sign, but I thought the finance board...
We did not sign it, do you want me to?
No, I thought you guys would be signing it on Wednesday. I didn't realize the selectmen also signed it.
Oh, yes.
I thought the reserve fund was in control of the finance board.
We didn't sign it pending, we just made a, we agreed that we...
Is this the form? No, it's a memo.
Pending approval.
We agreed that we would support that.
Could you state your, state your name for the people?
I'm Ruth Rivard, and I chair the finance board for the town. And we, this came up in discussion in our meeting last week, so we just had a dialogue about it, and we agreed that we would support this. But of course, it comes to the Board of Selectmen first, so we just put our thoughts together. We still would need to meet to officially vote the transfer. The finance board has not done that.
I thought reserve funds were in the full control of the finance board, the only ones to sign off, so I did not prepare a sheet to sign.
Okay.
But I can prepare one for you to sign by the end of this evening, if you're not taking long.
We did one form, if it helps you, we did a form to hire Catherine.
I have it.
Okay, that's the form. Yep, yep, exactly.
And this eight weeks is meant to cover this quarter and next quarter, so it's four weeks a time. And, you know, up two. I mean, if we end up having help, then fine, but we thought according to our discussion with the department, this would satisfy the backlog that they have and relieve some of the overburden of the department at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
Well, do you want us to make a motion? We could make the motion and just sign the form. She's going to prepare it. So the sum of money is three thousand dollars? So I'll make a motion to transfer three thousand dollars from the reserve fund to you want, do you want it to go to the assistant treasurer's line at this point?
It can go to the part line because it's temporary. It's not, we're not creating a position.
Okay. So, so to the clerks, the collector clerk line? So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second of approval. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. Thank you. And Ellen, when you get a chance.
Yeah, I don't
We won't be here long.
We're moving right along to the state house.
Annual appointments of town employees, committees and boards, missed appointments. We don't have a list, so we'll entertain a motion to table that.
We're, I thought we were on, I thought we were Article to the state house.
You have the old one. That was removed.
I have the old one?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Article to the state house. Do you want to look them up?
Oh. Oh, yeah. Okay. That was taken out. Article to the state house for finance director repeal discussion.
So I'll make a motion that we send the article to the state house. It's come back from town attorney now, is that?
I don't believe it has.
What are we voting?
So it would have to be tabled until we get
Okay, so
Until we get the final draft.
Oh, okay, so it's still at the attorney then?
I hope so, because I don't have it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Dan, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Until the, until town council approves the final draft, I don't think it's properly before us.
Okay. Then we move to table?
All right, motion to table.
Second it.
A motion to table and a second. All in favor? In unanimous. Zero waste bag discussion. We presented with some paperwork here for the trash. I think we basically had that, that the request was two dollars and fifty cents a bag and a dollar of that would go back to the town.
And the color is purple.
The color is purple.
Is that, that's one of the color choices, right? Purple?
Yeah, that is one of them.
Okay, well, that's what they picked.
Is it more expensive than green?
I, they're the same price, no matter what color you pick. I don't know.
I don't know. Okay, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the zero-waste-bag program at a cost of two, sale to the public would be two dollars and fifty cents per bag, handled through the board of health, and the color of the bag is purple.
I'll second that.
Get this rolling.
Okay. Motion on the floor is, and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
You go ahead.
We haven't decided whether or not we're going to reduce though, right?
What, you're going to do what?
Four to, three to two to?
No, that was, we were sending that to town council and the waste management.
Okay.
Well, we could use the bag anyway if you wanted more than four right now.
If you want to go five, six, and seven.
If you really want to go, yeah, yeah.
Want to go more than four?
No, I mean, if someone had more than four barrels, they could buy the bags.
All right.
So we might as well get it going.
That's the cheapest we can do?
Dan, you want to take up some time and go look into?
No, I don't know if you could do it for a dollar a bag. I mean, I, was it?
Well, we want to make some money.
How do we go straight to two fifty?
To pick up a buck.
I don't think you'll see too many people.
Not too many buyers at that counter?
I don't think that's, that's going to be a big item.
Not going to be a big, big sales item for Christmas?
There are plenty of bags for you.
Stocking stuff. There's some
Dan, they're all for you.
Uh, Jason, go ahead.
Dan, we could always go back to zero. All we have to do is increase the taxes.
Well, we could cut the budget. How about that?
Yeah, you didn't mention that. Okay.
See how I think? We could just get the scalpel out.
Well, the motion was for two dollars and fifty cents a bag for, for the additional trash bags, color was purple. Town of the two fifty, town would end up with a dollar. Go back into the general fund. That's the motion and the second. Any further discussion on that?
No.
None. All in favor?
Under protest.
Unanimous, but one under protest.
Reluctant.
Thank you. Next, approval of one-day liquor license for Emily Perrant and Randy Hendrickson for a private event at VZ Park on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. We have the paperwork here for that.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Emily Perrant and Randy Hendrickson for a private event at VZ Park on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, motion is a second?
Second.
Right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. Next. Approval of one-day liquor license for Elena Buckman for a private event at VZ Park on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Elena Buckman at VZ Park on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. Notice of a public, notice to the public of approval warrant, twenty-one dot fifty-four B, the amount of
Mr. Chairman, we voted that.
Yeah, we did.
Yep.
That was prior. Next, stone wall has been a notice from the notice from the planning department of a stone wall that was dismantled on, on Ascenic Road, one, one eleven King Street. Pictures were enclosed, a vote to send a letter to the resident forming of a public hearing and a notice of approval for stone walls and trees can be removed. This was this stone wall was removed in violation of our scenic bylaws, which was enacted some years ago. Looks like it was taken in two thousand and three and four, or four. There were some at the time, I remember that. There was some, there was some discussion against it, but it passed. But this, if you look at your paperwork, the, the stone wall has been removed in violation of the the ordinance or the, the bylaw, really. Looks like it was, it was done to enlarge the driveway. It should have gone through a hearing before it was done. What are your wishes on that?
Well, they're asking us to vote for us to send the letter, or are we voting to let the planning department send it? Are we the enforcer of the scenic road bylaw? What does the bylaw say?
No, there's not a bylaw. We, we have a bylaw in place.
Right, we have a scenic road bylaw.
Scenic road bylaw.
Yep.
And in my opinion, taken down, taken down in violation of the, the bylaw ought to be put back in. I'd like to send them a letter and tell them to put it back up.
Or?
Or go
Come before us and give us their rebuttal. I mean, I think they have a right to process and what's, no matter how thin the corner might have two sides, so I just, yeah, just send them a letter. I, I agree.
Well, is this
On information and belief, you removed it in violation of this.
We could have, have a letter sent to that effect. You want to have them come into the next meeting and
Unless they object, you know, just, yeah. But, you know.
Unless they object to putting it back?
Well, I don't know. They might say, well, they got approval or they thought they could remove it, or I don't know. I just
So you want an explanation from them?
I'd like an explanation from them. I mean, I'd like to hear both sides of the story.
Absolutely. You want to put this on, on table until the next meeting and see if they'll come in and with the next
I think it's prudent. You give them notice that this is what's being alleged and please come to the next meeting and and we'll, we'll make a decision based upon what we hear. Right now, it's one-sided, right? As the planning board says this. I mean, where's this parlaying up?
That's what I'm asking. I did look through the paperwork and I saw the pictures and I know that King Street is a scenic road, as is Center Street. Both were designated by town meeting, so I, what I'm wondering is what are, what other board potentially could be involved? It wouldn't be the planning board, I don't think, unless they've gone for a permit or something, right? The planning board wouldn't know about this unless they had filed paperwork. So that's what I'm asking is the
We're flying blind. I mean, did a neighbor complain that one of the abotters, I mean, how did it happen? I mean, why now?
Yeah.
How many years ago is it? Is there a statute of limitations? Is there a lapsed period?
It's voted, it's in the, it's in the bylaw.
Yeah.
But it was a
Oh, here's the, wait a minute. Let me just look at
Information was, in, in our email, information from a resident about a stone wall being removed on King Street. In two thousand and four, town meeting voted to designate all of King Street as a scenic road, making it subject to the scenic road bylaw. Since we no longer have a road study committee, the authority falls to the board of selectmen.
Ah, okay, thank you.
I inform the resident that this matter is being forwarded to the selectmen. At the end, it made a motion to send them a letter and invite them into the next meeting with an explanation, so they can forward our explanation.
Well, I'm wondering, I'm just, what is, our bylaw says the next, our bylaw should tell us what the next step is if it's been violated. No? It doesn't speak to it?
It's not going to give us the procedure.
Okay. So we need to advise them and give them a copy of the bylaw that they violated?
Well, Kathy, you should know about this because it says here that you helped write the scenic bylaw.
I know, right?
You should know all about it.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I know about it. I do.
You didn't put procedures in there, Kathy?
I know, that's, just a minute.
Here's the person that puts the procedures and
I'm getting too much criticism. I know, I remember this. Let me just go back.
Jeez, it's vagary. It's void on its face for lack of clarity.
It was to protect the tree canopy, that I know.
Well, Kathy, we know that that does come with age with some people.
Whoa, whoa. You just made an age joke. That's, that's unprecedented. You're older than me.
We're not employees, so it doesn't apply.
I guess you can't fill us in on that anymore. You don't remember it.
I'm looking for it, would you mind? Yes, wait a minute. Give me a second here.
I think it's, I think it's only right, Mr. Chair, that you if you're going to accuse them of something, they have a right to respond.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second on that?
State, state the motion one more time, please.
Motion is to write them a letter.
Write them a letter.
And
State the allegations.
Yeah, and have them come in and explain this side of the story. So I'll, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? None.
No.
Oh, Catherine, you had some?
Who are we voting to write this letter? Is it me or the planning?
Uh, Dan's going to put that in his motion. Uh, who's going to write that letter, Dan? Planning.
Yeah, well, that's dumping on the planning board. They, they need, need some work. Wally can do it.
Okay, the motion on the floor and a second. No further discussion. All in favor of having planning write a letter to that they're in violation and invite them into the next meeting for an explanation before we decide on how to proceed with this. All in favor? In unanimous. Thank you. And next, order of business, interim town management discussion.
That was my request, Mr. Chairman. And I think, I think we've, we've touched a lot on it already tonight with our discussions of tasks and jobs and extra help, and I believe tomorrow we're meeting with our town council to get more input on how the board can function better during this interim period.
We'll, we'll entertain a motion to table.
Motion to table.
A motion to table. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor of the table? In unanimous. Approval of, next order of business, approval of six to eight flag football promotion signs to be placed around town for the Seacoast Youth Flag Football League. And we have a letter on behalf of the youth Seacoast Youth Football League to put six to eight signs around Groveland advertising the youth football league, flag football. According to this, last year there were about forty Penntucket players on the field. Don't know how many from Groveland, but they want to put some promotion signs around, six to eight of them around town. We have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion as long as they take them down when the
That's what I was going to say.
When they're done, cleanup.
Yeah, give it, give it a timeline and
Yeah, give it a timeline. Just whenever the, the sign up ends, take them down.
Okay, motion, a motion on the, on the floor to allow them to put six to eight flag football signs up with stipulation that they remove them when the promotion is over.
I'll second that.
Motion. Motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor? In unanimous. Next item, approval of reshuffling of the CARES Act responsibilities and stipend to be shared between the accountant and the director of economic development. Rebecca, you
Look who's here.
How did you get here?
It's more Alan's request, really, but
What's that?
Can I grab Alan? It's more of a request.
Yeah, sure, sure. Good idea. Yeah, well, why don't you, why don't you just sit at the table?
Yay. Well, we can all sign it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen. This is, this is coming up here, the approval of reshuffling of the CARES Act responsibilities and stipend to be shared between the accountant and the economic development director. We do have a letter here from you explaining, you currently receive a stipend of three hundred dollars a week for both helping in the treasurer's office and the CARES Act grant. We propose that Rebecca receive one hundred per week and your stipend go down to two hundred.
Yes.
We have, do a motion before we do a discussion. Motion to approve that request?
I'll make a motion to approve the reshuffling of the CARES Act responsibilities and stipends between Ellen and Rebecca.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Second, seconded for discussion. Okay, go ahead.
So I did a little bit of research on this and I believe you should be entitled to overtime pay out of the grant funds. Because this is sort of like management of a grant, a ginormous grant, and it's in addition to the full-time job that you already have. So in talking to our town auditors, I asked him how our towns dealing with this? What are they doing? You know, I mean, if only so many people I asked him, how are towns dealing with this? What are they doing? I mean, with only so many people and so many people hours. So they're doing it several different ways. Some towns have been able to find a consultant to manage all that paperwork for them, and they've done that. But he said those are scarce and hard to find.
Yes, they are.
He did mention name Eric Kinshaw if we had questions or anything, but he said he's spread very, very thin. Likelihood of being able to gauge his services are slim to none. Because you're both working full-time, this would probably entail more hours, would be my thought. If it's paid as salary, it's pensionable upon your retirement. And I believe as long as you account for the additional hours that are specifically for the purpose of managing this grant fund, whether you call it the CARES Act or the American Relief Fund or whatever they're calling it, I believe we can charge them to that grant.
That would have to start now, not prior. I couldn't go back.
No, you can't go back. Absolutely not. No, no, no.
The overtime I worked, I just counted it as stipend money.
Well, right. Most towns did exactly what happened. They just threw it at people to do. Some people didn't even get a stipend. Some towns just threw the work at them and said, get it done. But with... I've noticed in some of the emails, and I don't read them all because there's so many, but I know that it has been mentioned that if you needed to hire staff to help administrate this grant, you may charge it to that grant. And we just have to be specific about the hours. So it can't be the hours, I would assume, the hours that you're supposed to be doing your accountant work.
Right.
But I have no problem with the hours being remote or whatever, as long as if that's the pleasure of the board rather than doing a stipend. And it would have to be overtime.
Anybody else?
Hey, it's pensionable.
Well, I was just waiting for you to think that's a good idea. Is that acceptable?
It's whatever people want to do. I could probably see if I could charge the stipend to the grant. If it has to be overtime.
I would do hours.
Overtime, I don't really... The whole point of this was I don't have time to do it. And Rebecca said she could help with the project end, which is more her expertise and less mine, and that's what I don't have time to do. And I would handle the financial reporting part of it.
Right. So you would account for your hours on financial reporting and she accounts for hers. But my point is then we would pay you for the hours' work rather than giving you a stipend that's not considered part of your salary. I know it's a long ways from retirement, but to me, this makes a good sense because we do have to manage this grant. It's not going away. It is a lot of additional work. And we've already kind of done this in the Board of Health with the nurse. She was hired to work six hours a week, and when the COVID hit, we had to add additional hours. So her six hours were charged to the town budget. The additional hours were charged to a CARES grant, and it worked very well, as far as I know. So I don't see why we wouldn't do this because then we don't have to take the money out of our operating budget. We can just deduct it from the grant that they're working on. This is all the paperwork that's involved in managing this grant and getting it to the places where it's needed in our town. And if we document the hours that it entails to do that, I think that's beneficial. And I think they're entitled to that pay. I think it's more than $100.
So what about the treasurer's side of the stipend?
You meant...
That stipend was to help in the treasurer's office and to continue the CARES Act.
My reading of it was that this was to CARES Act responsibilities. That's what it said. That's why I looked into it.
In the treasurer's office. That's what my...
It didn't say that.
The 300 a week is for the treasurer's office and the CARES Act.
Well, you... You're helping in the treasurer's office. I understand from talking to the auditors, this happens in small towns. We've just given them more help, so maybe your help won't be as needed. And if we're lucky enough to hire a treasurer...
Help process payments. If you get a treasurer, my help won't be needed.
Yes, I know. And that's what we're working on right now. We are planning to do that. So the CARES Act money cannot pay for treasurer work, no.
Right.
So I researched the CARES Act. I had nothing... I had no information about treasurer work.
Jason, go.
So would this just be simple, that it's just to split up the stipend and keep it the way it is?
Yeah.
And move forward?
Yeah.
That's what I was... That's what I put forward.
I think we should probably just keep it that. I mean, I understand that the hours and stuff would be more beneficial for you because of the pension that would draw upon it, but I think it's still just temporary, and I wouldn't want to muddle it up with additional tasks of logging hours, more submissions, when everybody's already shorthanded and strapped.
Well, except that this is a... That American Relief Grant is a large grant. It's going to require a lot of hours of work.
Yeah, but this is...
So we're mixing things together is my concern. I think that it said CARES Act responsibilities on the agenda.
Right. I don't think that's the American CARES Act. I think that's different. Well, my mistake.
No, the CARES Act is different than the rescue funds.
It's all connected, though. It's like it's a big grant, and that's what towns are doing. I'm just throwing out there that this is what other towns are doing, and if we do do a stipend, we're just going to have to take it out of... I don't know where you plan to take it from, but we have a source of funding for CARES Act hours. That's all I'm saying. We do have a source of funding for hours spent to manage the CARES Act grant. So we do have a source of funding.
Well, her request is to go, instead of the $300 stipend that she's now receiving, to go to $200 a week, and $100 a week would go to Rebecca. It seems to me that we could approve that part of it and then have Ellen look into the possibility of taking some of that money out of the grant. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can look into it.
Try it, yeah.
Stipends are allowed, too.
I don't know. Yeah.
So any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Dan, go ahead.
Is that fair between... I haven't heard from Rebecca. I mean, is that fair between you or is that a good, I guess, bifurcation of the workload there? Is that... So you're still doing two-thirds of the work, and it's two-thirds, one-third, it's close enough?
Well, I held on to two because part of it's for the treasurer's stuff.
Yeah.
So once we get the treasurer, that would, you know, the idea is that we split it, and then that...
So that two would go away. That would go away, right?
Like one of it. I would like us to get a TA that I can hand the CARES Act off to and get a treasurer that I can get rid of that work.
Rebecca, sound good to you?
We talked. I didn't think 50 bucks was really worth her while, so...
I think that's fine. I would like to help Ellen, and it is in my wheelhouse in terms of project management, and I think I could pick it up quickly and be helpful.
And it's fair to both of you?
Of course. Whatever I can do to help.
Okay. That's all I need to hear.
Okay.
So we already made a motion?
A motion?
Yeah, and we seconded it.
Motion and a second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? None. All in favor? In unanimous. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Old business. Anybody got anything? Jason? Kathy?
Yes, that Rebecca. Tell her not to go anywhere.
Rebecca, hold on.
That DOT thing.
We're on old business.
That's old business. We had it last week before us. So what is the status of this document?
Rebecca Oldham, Director of Economic Development, Planning and Conservation. So essentially, what happened is that MassDOT had reached out specifically to Catherine without necessarily involving my department, and so there was a mix-up with the documents. So she had included it just as part of your typical correspondence without really knowing what it was in relation to, just like she would any of the correspondence that comes through for the Board of Selectmen. So when I was copied on the following correspondence, I had corrected them in terms of the mistakes on the traffic control agreement in relation to the community trail, as well as getting the amendment that was signed off by town council that we had been working on moving forward. So that document has been updated. It is just in relation to the construction of the community trail, essentially stating that any of the infrastructure that's put in place is going to abide by the traffic standards, by the state and federal highway standards, and that we would be responsible for maintaining them in the future.
So are we going to sign something or not?
So it just needs to be signed by the chief municipal officer, which would be the chair of the board.
Okay, so has that been done?
Yes.
Okay, so did we get a copy of the signed thing?
I have a scanned copy that I can forward over to you for the records.
Okay, thank you. That's all. I just wanted to make sure that we got rid of that because it was sticking on me that we hadn't. A second old business is that I'm wondering, did the garden club submit a bill? Because I know that Chairman Watson asked them to do some of the planting and mulching out front, and they did, but they, of course, are broke this year. So they were wondering if we would kindly reimburse them just for the cost of the mulching and plantings, and I believe it was $220. Did that bill get submitted? Okay, because this was sent to us.
Am I included on that?
Let me look. Yep, you are.
Sorry?
May 11th? Right, so I had that in my old business. We haven't finished that yet pile.
I do not have anything from May 11th.
Okay, well, you're welcome to my copy if you wish.
Yes, I will.
Yeah, thank you. And then on the appointments, we didn't appoint a parking clerk, and I think if nobody's a parking clerk, it could be the Board of Selectmen. It only comes into play if somebody challenges a parking ticket. So it's not like much happens. Yes? But you weren't appointed. It was listed as vacant. We didn't vote it. Right.
It's just one of those things that felt to me that I had to get. That's why I pointed my list of things that I do with the care.
But we didn't appoint you to that.
Entering it in, correct?
Yeah.
No, there's a... Ed Reed used to have to do, if somebody challenges a parking ticket, this is something different, I think. If somebody challenges a parking ticket, they don't... Police cannot officiate over it. And that's... Ed Reed used to do that, used to have the hearing or whatever. So now... Yeah.
He stopped doing that.
I know.
And the former finance director Denise took that responsibility.
Correct. So I feel like we need...
Do you want to make a motion to appoint Catherine as the...做一个新的parkingclerk?
Well, no, we've already given her too many things. I think we should...
We need to vote it.
I'll do it.
Yeah, let... I've moved up...
Closest I get to being a judge.
Dan McDonald as the parking clerk. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
There'll be like three-hour hearings, though. I want...
Go for it. Just go for it.
You come before me. I mean, you better be prepared. I mean, I come worse than Judge Judy.
I can't wait.
You've got to understand, there's no money in the budget for that.
Oh, I don't want any money. I just want camera time.
Is a motion on the floor? Any further discussion? In a second. Any further discussion?
I got a new title coming?
Yeah, we got to vote it. We'll call for the vote.
All in favor of Dan McDonald?
Yep.
I'll abstain, you know, conflict of interest. Wow, that's a resume builder.
Dan, you got anything under old business?
I don't know. The garden club, Kathy, you mentioned they're broke. I bought some tomato plants and they're growing like weeds. I mean, I got some tomatoes coming. Did you say something about the garden club?
Yeah, they did the...
Didn't they have the Little Red Schoolhouse plant sale?
They did over off front here. It's front of the town hall.
What was that thing at the Little Red Schoolhouse?
Oh, they did some of that, too.
I know.
It looks pretty good out there.
They do? Yeah, you know, four tomato plants and a pepper.
I had one last old business.
Rather talk about tomatoes.
I'm cleaning my house. The assessing department article failed a town meeting to be incorporated into the finance department. So then a letter was sent to town council about whether or not we can assign that. And so I thought since we're seeing town council tomorrow, and it's his opinion, or no, it's some other guy's opinion, but maybe we can get that straightened out because I believe there's an understanding that the assessing department is part of the finance department, and it says here, the article to incorporate the assessing department into finance department did not pass town meeting.
Yeah, sure.
When we voted to take the finance director 236A off the books and change government, that actually gets rid of the finance department.
But we haven't revoked that special act yet. It still exists.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then they just sit as their own department, then?
Well, all I'm asking is since we're going to have a town attorney here, he can tell us that. Maybe we just sit and wait for the act to disappear, or this question was put to them, whether or not the Board of Selectmen can just...
We can have...
Assign the personnel responsibilities. Yeah, yeah, that's all. That was just old business.
I don't have anything under old business. Selectmen's time, Dan? I have nothing. Jason?
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer for the committee to throw over Catherine's... Choice job description.
How many on the committee?
Two.
It'll only be two.
Well, it could be three. It could be an open meeting.
We want to get rid of that.
All right, so you want to... Okay, Jason wants to volunteer. Anybody else?
I'll do it.
Dan would like to volunteer. I don't know. I don't know on the Selectmen's time if we can vote on that. I think we can do that. Item's not anticipated. Reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. We'll just hold that for a second. Kathy, you have anything on the Selectmen's time?
No, I just say that one of the reasons I'm forwarding this type of approach is that I attended, well, remotely, the leadership conference, and one of the featured speakers was the KP Attorney, and one of the recommendations to help a Board of Selectmen become more high-functioning is to have subquarums of the Board of Selectmen assigned to, say, a finance person, a finance committee subquorum, and a school committee subquorum, and that way, more can get done in between meetings and less has to be hashed out on the meeting floor. So this would be along the lines of what Jason and I did with the union contracts, which worked, I thought, very well.
Okay.
Yep.
I have nothing on the Selectmen's time. Item's not reasonably anticipated. We had Jason and Dan volunteer for the committee. If I may suggest, we take one at a time so that we can actually vote on it because you certainly would abstain on your own. So somebody make a motion to appoint Jason to the committee, the subcommittee for duties of the administrative coordinator. We'll need a motion for that.
Did you make the motion or do you need a motion?
No, I didn't make it. I was just looking.
So I'll make a motion to appoint a subquorum to work with the administrative coordinator on assignment of duties.
The motion should be to appoint Jason to that committee.
Oh, to appoint Jason to the subquorum committee, yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Dan seconds it. Any discussion?
No.
None. All in favor? Three in favor, one abstention. Now we need a motion to appoint Dan McDonald to the same committee. We'll need a motion for that. Appoint Dan McDonald to that committee for administrative coordinators, additional duties.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Dan McDonald to the subquorum committee to review the administrative coordinator duties.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second. Thank you. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Abstain.
Three in favor, one abstention. Thank you both for stepping up. Anything else under... Item's not reasonably anticipated. I don't think so. Mike, did you have something?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Kathy had mentioned before some things on that list that she thought were, you know, didn't belong on that, on the plate, so to speak. So if you want to forward those to Jason and I, we'll go through...
to Jason and I, we'll go through what you have objections to, and if you want to state why, fine, if not, we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, correspondence. Email from David Schur of One Abbott Street regarding lack of trash picked up for two weeks. Email from Steven Gerard regarding destroyed garbage barrels. Adjournment, next special meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Monday, August 2nd, 2021. Motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn at 8:52 PM.
Motion, motion for adjournment is our second. Thank you, Jason. No discussion, all in favor? unanimous, thank you.